I'm going to Columbus. I'm gonna go up to Columbus. My son knows about it.
Oh, no, I, I, you know what, I think I, I think that was a...
Oh, no, I, I, you know what, I think I, I think that was a...
And told us, this is what makes all...
Thanks a lot for coming in.
We didn't have the 700 club back in town, we get Hugh and Eddie up there. Jimmy's there. I mean, they used to break the chains at Asian and Sea Level. I know you want to go back and take it, it just keeps in the point. It's not catching. And it keeps acting if they strike it out. It'll catch and go again, but it doesn't do it again. I wasn't sure I could give this thing off, I need like, oh come on, I don't know what pants on. Yeah, well, I wasn't sure, I didn't see it.
Right, but to further rearrange your success, I'm sure you want to change the president and the airport. Are happy with this project, here's what you're right. Make me clear, Mike, how many of these can you show a little textbook from that, you know, these is what we know that I'm not really sure.
No one to beg me. You were in, in France, you know? I was in Boston, I just talked about. I hope we ran it for the good third, I don't know. Well, Mr. Harry had his good places, that's who he was selling, that's why Daddy went to the sale in that bank. That's how they met, had to say, the buzz off. Yeah. Yeah. So, so they had that right, you know, same. Yeah. I cannot think of that one as long, six or seven days. Yeah, but she wasn't moving, she was the old, yeah, she was with Daniel. She was like the senior partner. Um, oh, uh, okay. But I remember, she married, uh, Dad, and she had a guy over there in Crossville. I've known her all my life, she's the hottest.
Move this up, Dan, there you go.
Good, that's not getting on your heart of something. Yeah. Yeah. Understood, yeah, on the same, on the same page there.
Yeah, no, I'm here. I'm on the guy. Yeah. She very much, I love her, she's one of my favorite. Yeah, everybody had a fit, I'd be like, wow. Up, Mark. They live around, they're better. I, I need to get the seat, great, I mean, I like, yeah.
I left the house.
No. Give us a pack. No, I'm not doing that, I have been around, no.
Hey, enjoy it.
Oh, yeah.
I'm here for it.
Take it slow, take it easy. I don't want that boat, it's got the heart to it. You got right there, Mama, with this boat, you want to look, ah, it's a good, I don't think, I took it to the street too. I don't even want to look at it. Yeah, I never liked it, Daddy used to have to threaten us when I came out there, he'd get the stuff, they'd send that to us. You got, now you're coming out there, yeah, that's what I don't want, that's why. Got a bad knee, man, I painted last night on the ladder, today I'm painting.
You know, I got the monitoring place.
Did you, I'm gonna have to.
One of them, last year I got that.
Better?
Yeah, it don't hurt.
Oh, man, that kill me all the time, you know when I'm walking around, I get the cat.
I think we got the needle.
I got.
And then I got it in the middle too, that don't hurt that much.
I know, I lost that.
You have, hey.
Hey, how you doing, John, come on here and crowd. Week started million, now you're here.
Scared to go out there.
What's that?
I'm scared to go out there.
I wouldn't go out there.
Have pitchforks.
You know? Hey, I'm voting for the, uh, the rezoning, so.
Yeah.
I'm putting it on the brada. Well, I don't know, it may, it may pass, I hope it passes. I think it's a tremendous opportunity in the county for better jobs.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, and, uh, we're talking, the mayor's been talking about years about getting better jobs in the county. So our graduates from high school and college don't move away. But when I graduated in high school, I don't, I went to college, like, but when I graduated, I said, I never went back to the city.
Right.
Because factory jobs are the only thing there, as hard as hell, you get a job in a factory, you gotta know someone.
Right.
So, so to dis- disallow this kind of thing, I mean, you got factories out at, on the racetrack like Thermal Fisher. I don't know if you ever heard of that company, but it's worldwide.
Yeah.
The stock price is like eight or nine hundred dollars a share.
Yeah.
And I went out there when they opened this one over here. They make, they make sanitized bags to make like vaccines in, and all the people inside are all sanitized, they got, I mean, really, it's a pretty cool place.
Yeah, and that's, those are professional jobs.
Those are professional jobs, and they make twenty, thirty, forty dollars an hour.
That's good stuff.
And that's, and that's good prices.
Yeah.
And that way you can live in the county, otherwise, and we have jobs in our county, people can't live in the county, the sheriff's department.
That's what we're at now, people can't afford to live there.
I know, you can't live in our county, we need jobs like this that they'll produce, so people can live in the county. And, and we got people, Jack Craft, whatever his name is, he used to be the assessor.
Yeah.
He's against, uh, you know, he's been, wow, you're taking our farmland, that farm, that land hadn't been farmed for years.
Oh, you're gonna say, no, no.
And not only that, but the people that own it, they had it rezoned to put a deal web there.
Yeah.
They didn't want that either.
Yeah.
They didn't want a deal web, they don't want any, and I'm thi- and they had chances over these years. And I don't see big issues of asking someone about an issue.
Yeah.
And people get all hot and bothered and, well, she made the same, he made the. I said, no, if I'm the commissioner, I'm working, and I see something, I say, what do you think of this?
Yeah.
You don't make the decision, you usually tell them what you think.
Yeah, and that's what we, I, I mean, I think we're, I think we're all cohesive now and that, that, that we feel comfortable saying, what do you think about this?
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, and, you probably did it with, as a pilot, I mean.
I tell you, when we're coming in flying and the weather's bad or this and that, and.
Yeah, what'd you do here?
Yeah, hey.
Yeah.
Anyway, you know, or somebody's doing something wrong, you say, you know, we were supposed to go over there and other.
How about, man?
How you doing, man?
All right.
All right.
You going, uh, you got your tickets?
Not yet, but I'm going.
All right.
Not as big a crowd back here as Mr. John's years out there.
We'll have a little bit in a minute.
Well, I figured, I didn't know.
No, I've been talking something.
No, we weren't talking like a band or.
We're just talking about how much, how good the office is working and how.
I think we're okay.
Asking people questions is not relenting your authority to make the decision.
My life's a lot easier, Mr. John.
Well, all I'm saying is.
Have you talked to Stacy on that show calls she got?
No.
Okay, she got show calls, and I don't think it's legal, and I've been trying to get her to call you.
Okay.
And she got it from Brody, and I don't think he's got the authority to ask about what was issued and not issued, but. Who am I? Who am I to question that? But.
Okay.
I think, I think, and it was towards, um, Martinez. It's not going to hearing until January fourteenth, nineteenth, somewhere in there.
Okay.
But.
Somebody sent it to me, we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, I, uh.
She'll be here tonight.
Yeah.
But, but. I think in the old days, that was something probably customary, but probably not a good idea now.
Well, well, not only that, you're right, you're probably right.
Yeah.
Well, we're thinking about advertising for the director's position starting tomorrow.
Okay.
If, if the committee agrees to that.
Okay.
And maybe interviewing next month.
Okay.
And, uh, HR, I've talked to HR about it already. I've got the copy that she's gonna put out if we decide to do it. I think this time we need to have a training session for the director. Training for the director. Now, how do we do that? I think, uh, anytime we have somebody coming in there to do, you're not really there unless you're sworn in. You're there, but you're not. You're trained. You're not, you're not a commissioner. And I think until the director's sworn in, I think she needs to go through the training like anybody else, even though she's gonna be the director. And so she'll know what everybody's doing and why. Now.
Well, Mr. John, I'll tell you, I'm a firm believer in training. I'm not sure.
Oh, yeah, I tell you, in the military.
Not sure you get too much training.
In the military, that's what we did all the time, training. Except in combat, and then we survived.
Yeah.
You try to survive in combat, and, and you hope your training will work for you there.
What are the qualifications? Can I ask?
I have, I have a qualification.
I might be asking something that's outlawed.
No, no, I got them, you can get them from HR. It's, uh, director, let me see. They've been written up. Let's see, let's see. It'll take long, I think. I tell you why. Is there a way I can get some? If there's a way, okay, you gotta be twenty-five, and citizen voter, high school diploma equivalent. Not convicted of the felony. Not the martial, mean.
John Payton? How you doing?
Good.
Director should hold a bachelor's degree in related field. I tell you what, if I can get somebody to make copies of this, I could give you.
Okay, I'd, I'd just like to know all the cases.
You wanna look at it? Let's see, one of the later, later pages in there.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Stacy called me and she, I don't know why she didn't call her other, she didn't realize at least, uh, Lakeisha Davis was up this, this month. Did they pay Marsh on that? Did they pay? Or did, they who? Roger Marsh?
Uh, it hadn't been resolved yet.
Hadn't been resolved?
He got served today, Mike, with, uh, EEOC lawsuit, um, pregnancy discrimination.
Ooh, federal court, no doubt.
Teacher was nominated.
Who?
Who filed, filed?
So it, it doesn't require an advanced degree, it doesn't require a law degree?
Well, the back, it doesn't require a law degree. It says on the back, in there, it has a list of requirements. Did you see that? If you look down at it, first of all, it says, I need high school diploma.
They may be downbarred.
Then down, put it down, it says a bachelor's degree.
Might be downbarred.
So, what it's.
He's sitting, City Ludner, Wilson County, doing business.
Down, down on the.
Mrs. Cordis.
Now, now.
So, it may get thrown out.
That's gotta go.
And then, and then, and some of the pages, it said, claim his name, the City Ludner. So, he's a criminal person?
Yeah.
And he's downbarred?
That's what it says, mentally required. These are the requirements.
How practice?
But you carry on those. Undersea shell.
Yeah.
Then it says down here. Teacher's bringing, put in for F and L.
Hold the middle of the bachelor's, you really feel it.
That's what she's doing.
Okay.
Now.
Okay.
You know what that sounds like? No requirement, judicial business, judicial commissioner.
Turns, you do a lot of this, and I turned it down, discussed it.
And if you're gonna be, this is for the director, director. Division director, I guess. I don't even have to talk to HR because I don't understand all the, this is minimum, what's this mean? So, uh.
Let's see.
So I recommend that. This week doesn't do anything.
He will be.
I keep waiting. You know, they.
You don't have glasses, but if you're not, you can.
Does he get waivers?
I didn't ignore you. There was 41 people in there in front of you. I couldn't see you.
You're about right.
It wasn't where I was.
It wasn't.
Okay. My bad. I'm all right. You okay?
Yeah.
Is Pat okay?
She's still complaining, so yeah, she's fine.
Well, I mean, she's living with you, Golda.
Hey, Mike.
Yes, sir.
This is what HR was to put out. Maybe tomorrow, if we decide that's what we want to do. For the director's position. And interview next month.
I saw Jeremy Rich. I know who he is.
Yeah, he's over there.
That's what she wrote up. I talked to her the other day. She wanted to do it earlier, and I said, why don't you wait till our meeting's over? Make sure that's on board with that or whatever. So.
Who defends y'all? Who's your care?
Tennessee risk.
Who?
Tennessee risk.
Who they assigned to?
Nobody yet, because we just got it. I mean, it came in the mail today.
Who used it?
Last time, it was... Ortell?
Ortell Kelly.
Yeah, which is...
Spinning, Carl Spinning?
Yeah.
He's a good one.
Yeah, I liked him.
Yeah.
I liked him. Of course, we got... We got assigned, um, we had an IDEA going to federal court. We got assigned the guy out of Cookville. Just because I think he specializes in it.
Dan Ryder.
That doesn't sound familiar.
Well, I hope it's not.
Other guy, other gentleman?
Williams?
I had to hear his name.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
Williams.
Yeah, another guy.
Steve Williams or something?
No, it's... I don't know. I went Cincinnati with him once, certainly.
But Carl Spinning is, you know, we've had him a couple of times. I like him.
Yeah. Yeah, another guy named...
I would... Does he do federal cases? Carl?
Carl does. Primarily, I think, works Carl.
Okay.
Williams is... Ernie. Is it Ernie? No, it's not.
But it is Williams.
But he's a big fella.
Yeah.
And kind of laid back, so they're not talking yet. I'll leave.
Just a heads up.
Sorry. I got those... Much I'm going to with that fleet. So if they... They're done with about $200.
Better than the hot.
Spins on that figure.
Okay, no problem.
What do you have on the favor?
Two hundred.
Five. It's okay.
Good.
It's okay.
Good.
Life's going okay right now.
What's your prediction?
Well, I like our chances. I don't know exactly what... If I seem to think that we're going into the death pit up there. But you don't be playing SCC though. Ohio State's taking them up pretty scary.
It's not impressive.
Yeah.
You going to the horseshoe?
Yeah. Now, you've been there. Tell me about it.
It's just a horseshoe.
So the threats are amping up?
Crazy people. Well, like every game, everywhere.
Like every team, yeah. Like them Georgia fans.
They didn't like when Michigan went there and beat them though, did they?
You know, Tennessee goes in there and beats them. They don't run that old boy out of there.
Just don't put your flag in there. They kind of law in the state house that you couldn't do it in Ohio. And they threw it out. They didn't pass it.
There's a, there's an AI-generated thing on Facebook. It shows Tennessee flag.
Did it? You know, it's funny. I used to go to Florida State games because my niece went down there. My brother...
There's another incident.
Tallahassee. They rode that horse. I mean, he's part, he's part Indian. You have to be part Indian to ride that horse.
Seminole.
You gotta be a Seminole Indian. And so he's got all, he's got the, it's all fire. They used to take it in front of their team. And now they don't do it. They do it in the middle of the field. They used to be right in front of their bench or there.
And you had information work that you didn't follow.
But I tell you, in order to ride that horse and do that, you gotta be part Seminole.
You get into the stadium on Saturday night, and after selling beer and alcohol everywhere, and everybody gets worked up. You never know what's going to happen.
I love to go to the Florida State games. They're fun.
I hope to go to one sometime.
They were fun, but they were fun.
That's suicide.
And of course, just like any other state, probably downstairs, they have this huge store. You can buy all kinds of paraffine air. So my brother and I were there. He lives there. We go over there. And they said, you on a tour? I said, yeah, we go out and walk around the stadium inside.
Well, they could still love that NIL money.
Yeah, it's pretty cool. And they built a training facility there. There she is. You can't even believe the training.
I'm sure Tennessee's got one.
Oh, yeah. But I'll tell you, who's got the one that's most... Oh, I bet it is.
Oh, good.
And they got it right there with tall glass.
Oh, yeah. You can't believe what they do. It's impressive. They measure everything from these athletes, from their oxygen levels to whatever, their movements, all that. They take pictures.
Now. They're probably getting...
I don't know when this kid, I don't know the kid left.
Now, Ball State, where I don't know if they built this big... They sit at Ball State with underwater cameras and everything. When I was at school. And they were, I mean, they kept strokes. It's incredible.
The information that came from the kids didn't come up. The event took place. So whether the SRO heard about it Friday or today, I don't know. I haven't seen the report. They called me with it and said, hey, this is what we're doing.
Yes, sir.
But the one in Lakeville, absolutely happened.
They said, I'd say a word.
I'm stealing your chats at all. I'm not here. I'm only here to help.
We have a corona in that room. I don't know. Blake's not here, but I didn't think about it. In case you decide to...
She takes off the week every December, and her whole family, they go to like a Airbnb or a shower. And then she comes back, and then she works during normal Christmas.
I was trying to find the place she parked. I came at six o'clock thinking I'd park outside.
I came early.
Because I thought six o'clock.
I just got here and had a heart problem.
I saved your sleep.
Well, I appreciate it.
I hadn't got a ticket yet. You got your...
He came and did the assessment.
Calm down.
Yeah. I mean, he was... He does a good job. He has assessments. He does a great job.
Sir, please more. Let me know. Are they in Tennessee, second?
Yeah.
We're right there. Me and Taylor are wrestling.
Well, she is here. How do you know she's going? I just told him you're gone for Christmas.
No, you got a full house.
There's a new guy coming.
You got him, man.
This should set in place until the new governor comes in. When the new governor comes in, it'll be a check.
Okay, we're gonna call an order in the judicial comminule. Approval of amendments first. You should have some in front of you that are pretty short. Do you have a motion? Are you ready?
Motion, Chair, for you.
Second.
Any questions on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, public comment. We have a lot of public here. Anybody want to speak about anything on our agenda? Don't take care of much of what we... There is nothing. We'll continue. Now, the first, we have a reappointment of three judicial commissioners. And we have to amend the agenda tonight to do this. And so we're gonna start with Bishop Davis. Hers is due actually this month, so we need to get this done.
Yeah.
Got notified a little late on that. And she's been here how many years?
Four.
Four years. Four years. She's, I have no comments to the negative from any of the judges. And I entertain, she'd like four-year appointment.
What was her original appointment?
How many years?
Four.
Four years was your original?
No, one year at a time.
One year at a time.
Okay. Every time? You've got reelected every single year?
Yeah, I've never been here because I've always had a salary mistake.
Which is fine.
I'll make a motion when we readpoint.
Yes, because I came in.
A two-year term.
Second.
Okay, any comments? Also, at the same time, we'd like to, I would make the motion that we make her the same pay as we did Mr. Williams last month. Because she's the only one that is beneath him at this time.
I'll second that.
We got one more.
Okay.
Better get a reappointment first.
Okay.
Yeah, well.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, make a motion that we raise her salary to what we did in Mr. Williams last month. She's the only one beneath that at the time.
I'll second that.
How's that?
Go ahead.
How's that salary set though? What, do we have the authority to even do that?
Well, we can hire them in wherever we believe they should go in. And I have the base scales right here for everyone. And she's the only one that's below Mr. Williams.
The money's in the line.
And the money is in the budget.
I don't have a problem with that. I'm just...
The money's in the budget for that.
It's not a lot different for her. I mean, it's not a huge jump for her, but it's a little.
Okay.
And since she's coming up for four years, she deserves it.
And...
Well, I mean, if she's done four very well with no complaints, and we're going into a new contract, I would assume that means a pay bump.
That's what I'm thinking too. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, the next person on the list is John LaFever. He's been here, how long, John?
I make a motion. Will you readpoint? Mr. LaFever for two years?
Second.
Okay. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And the next one is Stacy. Stacy's been our acting director for several months now.
Eight.
Eight months. And she's asking for four years as well.
It'll be 19 in January.
She's been here 19 years in January, right? So she's been, she's had four-year assignments before, four-year appointments before. Is that true?
Oh, but they were always four years until Lisa came.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion. There'll be a point here for four.
I kind of want to set some standards, which is the only reason why I'm not seconding right now.
Yeah, I agree. That's kind of where I'm at on standards as far as, you know, we're kind of running with them. And I think she's gonna be here for four, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Another motion.
Make a motion for two years.
Yeah.
Okay.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's what we have there. Now, we have one other issue with the commissioners. We had one that resigned. A full-time resignation.
Who was that?
And that was, what's her name? Jenny White. She resigned. She has some issues.
How long was she here?
And...
Um, she was here about four or five months. She just went full-time a couple of months ago, maybe a month ago. She had a lot of home things going on, and she had to resign. I do have a part-time person, though, that wants to go full-time. And if we, if you guys would allow that to happen tonight, he can take over her time during the week of Christmas. If he puts in his two weeks, he'll be, he said he can work during Christmas.
He has another job. Yeah, that's Mr. Mars.
James Mars.
He's, Mr. Mars.
You thought of elected him before.
He's been here, and we appointed him for two years.
No issues with that, Mike?
And we also...
He goes in the full-time position, part-time vacation.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we can do it tonight, though.
We can do it tonight, and I plan...
Okay.
We can do that tonight. I was gonna bring all of them before tonight, even though the two are not...
I make a motion that we appoint Mr. Mars to the full-time position.
Four.
Four to you.
Four to you.
Second.
Okay, any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's done. Okay, and that...
So now you'll need to fill out part-time.
Now, we have one part-time over now.
Right now.
You have the whole staff.
We don't have anybody yet.
I know.
Now, the next issue... Okay, so, and I'll bring all four up tonight on the floor, if that's agreeable.
Sure.
Again, I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make a motion to amend the agenda and to move the appointments below, before the public hearing. If that's agreeable.
I think so.
Okay?
I'm all about that.
Yeah.
Me too.
I'm sure they are too.
That way they don't have to stick.
That's why you don't have to stick around.
Yeah, that'd be great. I went to work at six this morning, so that'd be great.
Okay, the next issue on the agenda is we want to advertise for the judicial commissioner director. Now, it's February 12th, I guess, is when it comes due. I have a copy. HR gave me a copy of what she would be putting out if we agreed to do that.
Can we wait and actually take a look at the job description?
We have a job description right here.
Right, but can we really sit down and look at the job description and decide what we want to do before we actually put this out? Maybe delay it till January?
I would say so. We've got a very good interim in place right now.
Yeah, and now we can double check because I think... I think there was...
What do you want to look in the job description for?
Well, I think there was some misinterpretation as to what the job was. That it's an administrative director, not a...
I don't have a problem with that.
Not a director over the day-to-day of a judicial commissioner. And I want to, I think we need to go through and figure out how to clarify that.
Can I ask Stacy, what do you consider the job right now? You're a director.
Yeah, I'm the director, the deputy director of a judicial commissioner.
I know, but...
I mean, I, my day is several things. Today, it was an order of protection that turned into a problem with a domestic that was done yesterday that we had to fix, and I had to call the jail. So I do schedule, I do budget.
Right.
Order supplies. I'm sorry.
It's okay. I get, well, I'm, because I know we're, we don't have a lot of time tonight. And I guess my point is this. I think there was some miscommunication and misunderstanding as to when you actually do your function as a judicial commissioner. So when you swear somebody in, you are neutral, independent, detached.
That's correct.
Okay.
Statute says.
Exactly. So in that situation, during that period of time, technically, you don't have a boss, right?
And you decision make a boss.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying. I want to make sure that that's clear.
But we do have office policies that we try to adhere to as an office.
Well, yes, but in general, I want to make sure that the director is clear that...
Oh, I know.
During that period of time, well, yeah.
Yeah.
But the director is basically, the way the, if not reads is, she does all the administrative things. She does the scheduling. She does the budget. And she sets office policies.
Right.
And the policies are followed by the commissioners. If they have questions, they ask each other. There's the director.
I...
But she doesn't make the decisions for them.
Right.
And that's the way it's been working. Is that true?
Well, I...
Just make a motion. I'll make a motion. We wait till January to review this policy before we send out the request for hire.
Yeah.
Alter that a little bit, that in January, we make a decision. So between now and then, review it, however you want to word it.
Yes, between now and then, we can review it. So if that can be sent out to all of us on this committee, we review. Come January, we discuss and make a decision on when to put out the hire.
Okay.
Is that a good motion, Mike?
Okay.
I remember.
Yeah.
I got a question. On the job posting, was she wanting to post it this month?
She wanted to post it this month so we can interview next month.
And have somebody employ some...
And in addition to that, I mentioned to her that if we got someone, we hired them, that they must go through a training process. And the training process would be to be a commissioner and work for the ones that are in there now. And of course, they would know they would be the administrator as well. But they must be a commissioner because she just had a problem with somebody resigning. She had to fill in for the person. So it's always valuable to have that person to be a commissioner as well.
Right, but I think we need to talk through that process as to exactly what you just said.
I think this is one of those that worries. You should be in no hurry.
I agree.
And there's no hurry because even though February 12th is the day, you don't have to fill it that day.
Yeah, and I want to make sure with Ms. Wendell, if you're okay to stay in that interim position a little longer if needed as well.
What is your term as judicial commissioner expired?
We're gonna, we do it tonight.
We're gonna read...
But yeah, but it's...
Okay. Okay, so anyhow, that's fine. And once we do this and advertise it, the next agenda item would be, how do you want to interview? Do you want HR to weed out?
You got a motion on the floor.
Yeah, it's definitely...
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you go.
Okay, the next issue would be, how do, last time we interviewed, we interviewed with the committee.
I think we wait until January.
I'm not saying interview now. I'm just saying...
I understand. I think we wait.
The procedures.
I'd like to make a motion that we wait and convene a meeting in January and discuss this entire situation, including the job description, the process, the hiring process, all at one time, and come to a decision as a group. And then we move forward.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion. Now, do you have a date in January you'd like to do that? Or early January before the commission meeting?
Yeah.
Late January?
Early to mid-January.
Would we move it to Tuesday in January?
Third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday? Okay.
What's the...
No, that's when the commission is.
You're right.
The Tuesday after the third Monday.
Oh, we do the third Tuesday now? We're not doing the...
We change that.
Okay, okay, we're not doing, okay, that's...
So it's the... The 21st.
Yeah.
The January commission meeting will be January 21st.
So is there a meeting date prior to that? Do you like to meet?
Okay.
We can set that now, and I can get a schedule.
Um, I have, my phone is on my desk in the other room with my calendar in it.
January 9th is not a good night for me. I'll have to say that.
13th, I can't do it, but...
The commission meeting is the 4th, 20th of January, February.
Yeah.
No, you'll change it.
It's 3rd Tuesday. We changed that rule.
Yeah, we changed it to make it Tuesday.
Okay, so... So...
What about the 7th? It's a Tuesday.
We can do 14th. Is the 14th, you got it? 14th of January?
7.
Well, I was wondering about the 7th.
7?
I'm reading the 7th or the 14th.
I know. Well, I figure if we do the 7th, and then we have to, if, you know, if we've got to come back or anything, it gives us some time. Yeah?
7th is fine, or 14th is fine.
You want to...
Set for the 7th, that we have to come back 14th.
Okay, 7th was set. I'll call...
Sir, you need to vote on your motion first, but I wouldn't put a date in there because if it snows or something, you might do something.
No, okay.
I'll bet you need to vote on your motion.
Okay, all in favor of coming back in January and discussing everything?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, now, tend to leave, we can set the date with the 7th of January, which is on Tuesday. And I'll have...
What time?
Do you have 5:00 or 5:30?
What's better for you? I can come anytime.
5:00 works for me. Does that work for you guys?
5?
I was 5:00.
Okay, we'll do it 5:00.
Bein' rain.
No.
I can come anytime.
Better, better.
I'm retired. I come...
I'm not drinking coffee at 3:00, so 5:00, drink. Day starts early. Cram, don't, cram, don't wait.
I'm impressed.
Okay. Okay, and any old business? Any new business?
Motion to adjourn.
Got it.
I have a question. I'm being reappointed for two years as a judicial commissioner or as the deputy director?
As judicial commissioner, you remain deputy director.
You're acting deputy director.
Yes.
But I'm not being elected.
Oh, acting, you're acting director. You're deputy director.
Okay.
Is that not...
No, that's not correct.
No, she will be.
She was not interim director. She was still... Is that correct?
I'm not understanding the question.
Yeah.
Wait a minute.
Currently, was she, is she serving as interim director or still deputy director?
Interim director.
She was interim deputy director.
No, she's interim director.
According, I think in anger, is the interim director.
She was interim director as of 5:20.
You wanted to pay.
We're getting paid director.
I'm deputy director, but I'm an acting director in Lisa's absence.
Exactly.
But my title is deputy director.
You might acting director to y'all.
Yep.
Yeah.
And you will be reappointed as assistant director, interim director.
Well, I'm someone you're not.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay? We're done. Thank you.
Motion is adjourned. Second.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Listen down.
Yeah, Rob and then.
Good to see you.
I checked, all of today, they still got it in a lady, but I did. Um, I brought someone off because they're right here. Would that be all right? Here, you want to put your name in? Thank you, thank you. I am, yes, sir. Is this for me?
No.
So you, go ahead, you're here before me. Goodness.
You have enough of those?
Uh, I gave.
One here if you need.
No, I gave them, I think we had plenty of them, sir. We got some like non-hard guys. So you got one?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much, sir.
I'm gonna put my dad before you, because I beg.
Up to the end?
You got the end?
Yeah, well, I'm not, I haven't even done it yet.
Okay.
Your dad's pal.
Pal, P-A-L, yes, sir.
We've got Kyle and Mark both on our list to talk.
Okay.
I mean, check it, make sure.
Oh.
They don't have to talk.
I see you going, we got him. Yeah. Guy's building, but I ran over it, didn't it?
For just a second.
Can't believe that.
Overflow, that's out in the.
So he was just drunk?
Not here.
Man. Luckily, luck.
Intubated in the hospital still.
Really? I, I know, they need to turn the AC on. Yeah. Well, you didn't have my speed. I need to stand up.
We have to go to that overflow room, because I got to be up here.
Now, you won't be in overflow.
Hmm?
You're not going to be in overflow room.
Are they four? Let them ride on the back side, let them ride on the back.
No, I see you this house. They all be doing that for a go. He got on me because I didn't recognize his wallet, and I said, hey, what's the file? You white? I can't hear. Oh, I, I was glad they pay you, but not tonight. Anything that swap hands tonight looks bad.
Just want to have your attention for just a second, if I can. Appreciate all of our crowd being here tonight. Just so you will know, out in the lobby over on, to my right, there's a TV monitor that will capture all of this. If you'd like to watch it from out there, you're more than welcome to. And then directly behind me, there is a conference room that also has a TV in it for you to look at, if you'd like to do that as well. Power Marshall has informed me that I need to keep my doorways open, so you're welcome to stand anywhere you want to, but if you could stay clear of the doorways, we would appreciate that. As we talk about tonight, you have a sign-in sheet in the back. You'll need to be on that sign-in sheet to be able to talk. There will be a three-minute time limit on your conversation. It is not really a popularity contest tonight, in that if I have a thousand for or a thousand against, it sways the 25 people that will vote tonight. So what we ask you to do is speak, speak your heart. Try not to repeat, because once they've heard it one time, then if we could cover new territory or new information, that would help. If the sign-in sheets, which they made me aware of, was full in the back, flip it over and write on the backside. I will go through that sheet from top to bottom as we begin. As you have your conversation tonight, we ask you to address the commission, not the audience or the developer. This information is to them. They will not respond back to you, it's not a debate. It is information for you to give them on what you feel or how you feel. We have about seven minutes, but just wanted to let you know that you need to be on the sheet if you plan to speak tonight. Thank you for your attendance. Okay, he's got, he's got a guy here, he said. Yeah, if you'll bring it to, when I gather it down, if you'll. Respectful of the commission's time and others' time here tonight. Not trying to keep anybody from speaking or using their right, but we just want to be very respectful of the commission's time. And also in our comments, as the mayor said, addressing the commission, please use the utmost respect. Thank you. And if your name's on there and you've been called, but you don't want to speak, just respectfully say you don't want to speak. Thank you. Yes. It is 7:00.
I already had the.
That's on TV. About 25 here. Welcome all of our guests tonight to the December 16th, 2024 County Commission Meeting. We appreciate you being here. Take this opportunity, very, at the very beginning, to wish all of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Like to recognize the leadership, Wilson class, that's here tonight. If you would, please stand, if not already standing, we'd like to welcome you here. Thanks for being here. We would do a recess, there you go. Commissioner Glover said that we would do a, once we do a recess, when we get through the public hearings, that you guys may want to meet outside. Where do you want to meet at, Commissioner, for a picture? In the back? Up front? We'll meet up front during that for a picture. This time, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Clark for the prayer and pledge. Please rise.
Good afternoon, everybody. Before we get started, I just want to say a quick, we should keep the families of the, uh, the, the act of school violence this morning in Madison, Wisconsin, let's, let's keep those families in our prayers tonight. We've had another, another senseless act of violence on one of our school campuses, and we should just keep them in, in our prayers. I've invited Michael Lewis to come and open the meeting tonight with a prayer. Michael is a good friend of mine. Our boys started playing football together about 15 years ago, and we've been a, we've been pretty tight ever since then, and the families always have a chance to level on each other as much as possible. The kids are all still great friends, and, and Michael's a, Michael's a man of strong faith and a man of God. He's a deacon at Hope Baptist Church, and he'll tell you where that's at, and that he's going to lead us in the prayers this morning, this afternoon.
How's everyone doing? My name is Michael Lewis, I'm a deacon at Hope Baptist Church, um, out here at the Outland Mall. Us and Habitat are the only two that's out at the mall right now. I, just a short deal about myself, I found God when I was probably around the age of about 10 years old, and, um, the things that I've had to endure and count on the Lord for in my life is beyond words right now. Still, just get kind of choked up about thinking about what he's done for me. Like I said, I've had a, a heart transplant, I've had, survived COVID on, two months on a ventilator, so when I say the Lord can actually make changes in your life, just trust in him, and he can, he can definitely do that as well.
Amen.
So, uh, if we're just by our heads, I'm not going to keep up too much of your time, we got business to take care of. So, Father God, we come to you in the name of Jesus, Lord, just thanking you for having the opportunity to be here today, Lord. We pray that everybody respect each other, Lord, through this meeting, and that business get done well, Lord. I pray that you would just be on each other's heart and, and just understand, Lord, that we're here to conduct business and not make enemies among ourselves, Lord. We still have to live in this city and also in this, uh, in this county together, Lord. So just help us out in this situation, in Jesus' name. Father God, we just pray that each and every one of us have traveling mercies on our way back home to our respected places, Lord, and that you would continue to guide us through these holiday seasons, Lord, just the, um, the act of violences that are going on in this world, Lord. We just pray that you would just heal us as a, as a nation, Lord, just guide us in, in your direction. And Father God, I just pray that you would just continue to just, just let us lean on you when we need help, Lord. Help us through this season where we have lost loved ones, Lord, and, um, our families may not be the same because we have that rock, um, we don't have that rock anymore, Lord, to lean on that we normally would through these days, but, Lord, we know that they're resting with you, and that one day we'll be the same, Lord. Lord, I just pray these and other blessings, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
You to address the flag? My flag's.
To the flag, in the United States of America, and in the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here tonight. If you will, please press yes on your panel to record your presence in tonight's meeting. Can you help me, Cory? Got them all here? 25 present, zero absent. This time, we have public comment period. This public comment period is based upon the fact of any. Okay, she has it on here ahead of time. Okay, my bad. My bad. Report for steering committee, Commissioner Fields.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the steering committee met. Whereas we were actually in the upstairs conference room, so I would like the deputy clerk to make a note of that change. So I make a motion that we amend the steering committee minutes to reflect that.
Any discussion? Seeing that all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adoption of the agenda?
Everyone has a copy of the agenda. I understand that Commissioner Gentry would like to make an, uh, an amendment to that.
I make a motion, we amend the agenda. I have four judicial commissioners for appointment this evening. In addition, I'd like to move the elections and appointments above the public hearing in, in that motion as well.
Say aye.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the adoption of the agenda now, as amended, to your motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And a consent agenda? And then we have public comment period. This is not the rezoning, this is anybody who would like to speak before the commission, and based on anything that's on the agenda tonight. Is anyone here wishing to speak on the agenda? If not, we'll close public comment period, and we'll move on now for special recognition. I'll introduce Commissioner Kurtz and Sheriff Robert Ryan.
Good evening, everyone. So glad that you all packed the house for this honor. I wish, I really wish, when I read this, that everybody would pack the house when we do something like this, because this is what it's all about. So if everybody would pay attention to what we're getting ready to read, and the gratitude that we owe this young man. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, to award the Medal of Valor to Deputy Zachary Lee Bandy. Whereas on November 22nd, 2022, the Wilson County Sheriff's Office received information regarding a pursuit entering Wilson County from Smith County with the subject fleeing from a domestic assault involving a weapon, stating he was armed with a handgun and wanted to commit suicide by law enforcement. And Deputy Zachary Lee Bandy assisted in a multi-jurisdictional and multi-agency vehicle pursuit of the dangerous felon whose presence placed citizens and fellow officers in fear of serious bodily injury or death, if not apprehended immediately. And during the pursuit and attempt to stop the V, stop the subject vehicle, the subject shot at Wilson County and Smith County Patrol vehicle, resulting in Deputy Bandy being shot in the leg. And utilizing his extensive training, experience, and quick decision-making skills, Deputy Bandy's quick and immediate assistance with apprehension of this dangerous individual was crucial in protecting the lives of citizens and fellow Wilson County and Smith County officers. And Deputy Bandy began his career with the Wilson County Sheriff's Office on October 26th, 2015, as a correctional. 26, 2015 as a correctional officer. He received his post certification from the Tennessee Law Enforcement Training Academy on December 20, 2019. Deputy Bandy is currently assigned to the traffic unit. Now, therefore, be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we, along with Wilson County Sheriff Robert C. Bryan, recognize the brave and heroic valor of the actions of Deputy Zachary Lee Bandy that reflects great credit upon himself, the Wilson County Sheriff's Office, and the citizens of Wilson County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved, the Deputy Zachary Lee Bandy be made a recipient of the Wilson County Sheriff's Office Medal of Valor.
Motion, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor, say aye. If you want to say anything, you're more than welcome.
First off, I just want to say thank you. Not every law enforcement officer in the country can honestly say that they feel appreciated by their community, but I do. So thank you all. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Record reflected was unanimous.
The next commissioner would be John LaFever. He's been here several years and we recommend him for a two-year reappointment as well.
I got a motion and second. Now, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next one we have is Stacy Swindell for a two-year commit- two-year appointment. She's been acting director. We want to reappoint her as the assistant director at this time for two years. I make a motion that we do that.
Any discussion? Seeing that all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And the last one, but not least, is Mr. Myers. He's been a part-time employee. He's agreed to go full-time. We had one of our full-time employees resign a few days ago and we're recommending Mr. Myers for a two-year appointment full-time.
Mike Kurtz, Mr. Mark Powell, Ms. Debbie Joins. Motion, second, discussion? Seeing that all in favor, say aye. J E C D V physician number 19, you are to confirm appointment of one member to serve a one-year term on the J E C D V board, position 19. Upon your confirmation, I'd like to appoint Mr. Caleb Thorne. Do you have information about him in your packet? Any discussion? Seeing that all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, can I go? Thank you. We do have a public hearing tonight for two land use and zoning amendments as well as a zoning resolution change on bed and breakfast. And so we need to go out of session for those right now and I'll call Christopher to the front. Got a motion to go out of session, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Christopher. Christopher will read all three of these to you. One is one from LLC Ventures, Free Hill Ventures. The other one is from Hillwood and the other one is a bed and breakfast resolution. Then we'll go to public hearing. We'll start out with anybody who wants to speak on the bed and breakfast. We'll close that public comment. Then we'll go to one on Free Hill Ventures and then we'll close that public comment and then we'll end up with Hillwood. Chris- Christopher.
A public hearing will be held before the Wilson County Commission on Monday, December 16, 2024 at 7:00 PM or thereafter in the County Commission Room of the Wilson County Courthouse located 228 East Main Street, Lebanon, Tennessee, to hear comments on the following applications. Application submitted by Joe Haddock Civil Site Design Group with permission from property owners of N W C Investments LLC requesting a land use plan amendment from high-density residential area to a commercial center area and a rezoning request from A1 agricultural to planned C4 commercial properties located on Bluebird Road, Lenwood Road, Bobo Road, and Routen Road, being Wilson County Tax Map 84, parcels 14 and 16, and map 89, parcels 4. The combined parcels for this request are containing approximately 1,381.9 acres. Application has also been submitted by Free Hill Ventures LLC on behalf of property owners McCurry East Ventures LLC and Kathy Epsby, requesting a land use plan amendment from medium-density residential area to planned commercial area and also a rezoning from A1 agricultural to C4 planned commercial properties located on McCurry Road references Wilson County Tax Map 141, parcels 2.03, and Wilson County Tax Map 141, parcel 2.06. And the combined properties containing approximately 11.28 acres. And lastly, there's a resolution amending the bed and breakfast section of the Wilson County zoning ordinance as it relates to A1 agricultural and R2 medium suburban residential. A copy of these requests and the amendment have been on file in the staffs and have been available during during regular business hours.
This time, anyone here wishing to speak on the rezoning resolutions, regulations on bed and breakfast for short-term rentals, please step forward to the mic at the back, name your, keep your name and address for the record. Seeing no one on the bed and breakfast, we will close public comment on that one and we'll move on now for the Free Hill Ventures LLC, McCurry East Ventures, amending the land use plan there from low desert, low density residential area to commercial for land use of 9.98 acres and from A1 zoning to C4 planned commercial. Anyone here wishing to speak on this property tonight? Seeing none, we'll close public comment on that one as well. And now we'll move forward with the public comment on the Hillwood Development Group requesting land use amendment for high-density residential area to commercial center located on Bluebird, Lenwood, and Bobo Road, 1,381 acres, going from A1 planned commercial zone to C4. Just to reiterate what we talked about earlier, you have three minutes to talk. I'll have, sir? I have the list. You have three minutes to talk and as I call your name, please step forward. I'll do the best I can to state the name correctly. Again, you're addressing the commission. You're not addressing the audience or the developer. And please help me with the time and the time should show on the screen. If you can help me with that, that would be great. Start out, first name on the list is Mr. Paul Ranky. Have I said that right?
I've heard it pronounced worse, Mayor.
Sorry.
No, you're good. Good evening, everybody. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for your time this evening. Paul Ranky with Hillwood, 6410 Poplar Avenue. I want to thank you all for your time this evening. Truly, it's an honor to be here in front of you today and I'm so proud to be able to share this unique opportunity to partner with Wilson County on a and a truly unique project and proposal here. I have, I have explained this project to so many people over the last so many months now and I promise you it is hard to do in 30 minutes, so I'm going to try and do it in three. Corey, if we could be on slide seven, that'd be great. Thank you, sir. So let's try and take this complex conversation and let's try and boil that down into one simple consideration. To me, that just boils down into what is the the most responsible choice for this particular intersection and this particular piece of property that the county has already designated as a place for growth and development in its land use plan? The current land use plan designates this for high-density residential. And so again, the choice comes down to what is the most responsible choice? We, we feel like our presentation, our proposal, offers the most responsible choice, right? And so we're choosing between agreeing with the county's current high-density residential land use plan or our proposal this evening. And so when you talk about and when you think about what is a responsible development, responsible developments sustain local economies, they support communities, and all the merits that are in our proposal that are in your packets today do all those things. I'm going to try and boil some of those merits down into into the four key ones for you. So the first really is providing a convenience store and gas station to this community that was lost years ago on the north side of the interstate and that's being provided by by Hal Bone. The second is access to clean, healthy, reliable drinking water that, if not for private development, won't happen out here. The third is thousands of quality jobs that will inject tremendous amount of tax revenue into this county to support things such as schools and road projects, teacher and county employee wages and salaries, right? Those things will be, will benefit greatly from the economic impact of this proposal. And lastly, is a unique collaboration between the University of Tennessee, Cumberland University, and the FFA to use 352 acres of this property, 25% of it, to promote the agricultural future of this county.
That is the time?
But let me, just one last, one last closing statement, Mayor, if I may. So really.
I can only let you go with three minutes. Hi, Representative Stratton Bone?
All right, thank you for your time.
Stratton Bone? I do not need the outburst if you can keep that from happening, please. I will be precise on the time for every person that's here. If you'll let Representative Bone come forward, please. Next would be Mr. Corey Johns, if you could be ready to roll, please. Representative Bone, your time has started.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate very much being here tonight, meeting with the commissioners. It's been quite a time, a long time since I was here and things have changed quite a bit since I first came in this room. See a lot of changes. When I came here the first time, there were 50, 50 magistrates here. We had two from each district and we met quarterly. And I might add that we were paid $5 a meeting. We got a grand total of $20 a year and I don't think any of us were worth that much. We were a county court at that time, you're a county commissioner. We were magistrates and squires, you're commissioners. Mayor Hutto's office was called County Judge and later County Executive. We voted by voice when our name was called. There were no buttons to push, no microphones, and no computers. And we too, like you, faced some very tough decisions. In 1974, our county court was faced with a hotly continued issue. We were to vote on buying 100 acres of land on the east side of Lebanon for what we called the James E. Ward Ag Center in honor of a longtime University of Tennessee ag extension agent. West Wilson residents believed the property should be located closer to to the west. And Lebanon folks opposed the plan of saying it shouldn't be in the agricultural development that close to the city. And across the county, there was strong opposition to the $100,000 price tag. Well, there have been a lot of changes in this room from time to time. It's a responsibility you have to make hard decisions. What's what's best for your county has never changed. Despite loud, loud opposition, harsh phone calls, letters to the local paper, even yard signs urging us to vote against the purchase, and public threats to vote us out of politics, we visited, we voted to buy the property and develop the West Ward Ag Center. The decision despite the opposition has proven to be the right thing to do. Thanks to this vote 50 years ago, we host one of the largest fairs in the Souths, have a magnificent expo center attracting exhibits and conventions on a regular basis, and other unique facilities for livestock competition, group meetings, a historical village, and other uses. And this county facility is a major contributor of tax revenue for our local government.
Representative Bone, your time is up. Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate you. Corey Johns, next would be Judy Harrington.
Good evening, Mayor Hutto. Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Corey Johns, 2032 Chesapeake Way, 37122. I have the privilege and honor of serving as executive director for the Joint Economic Community Development Board of Wilson County. Our organization was created in 1989 by this community as a partnership between Wilson County, City of Lebanon, and City of Mount Juliet, and the city of Watertown. Our mission is to develop, recommend, and direct a strategic plan of policies and actions that improve the economic well-being of the community and those activities and services which support economic growth, improve quality of life, encourage entrepreneurialism, expand local business and industry, and seek out enterprises to which support future development. The the impetus for this is simply around the fact that commercial property is taxed at 40% and it typically has a much greater value than other forms of property. That generate, that revenue that that generates provides valuable resources that help keep the tax burden on the citizenry low. We take this mission very seriously and I believe that we have been very successful at it. I want to share a little bit of information for your consideration. So currently in the 2022, 2023 assessment, despite the fact that GNRC data that's been presented to the Land Use Plan Steering Committee suggests that only 3% of Wilson County's landmass totals between combined commercial and industrial property, it generated 27% over 27% of the assessed value of of property taxes assessed. Additionally, the personal property taxes, which were 6.19%, can be added to that total because all of those come from properties that are zoned commercial. So basically, a third of the property assessment in this county comes from only 3% of the landmass. Meanwhile, 69% of the community is currently zoned for farm, agricultural, and undeveloped land while about a quarter is reserved for residential use. Today, a quick inventory, I'm sure we'll hear some things about this. Today, our office, which maintains records on, the most up-to-date records on properties that are being developed and that are being marketed for lease, has about 2 million square feet of industrial, viable industrial property that's currently under develop, under development. We happen to know that a million and a half of that is currently either being leased or is active, active in serious negotiation, which currently leaves us with only about 446,000 square feet of available industrial space in the unincorporated areas of Wilson County. I wanted to touch a bit on wages with the few seconds I've had left. We've recently announced some exciting projects. Schneider Electric, Bridgetown Natural Foods, and average wages that we're recruiting are about $26 an hour and above. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
This Judy Harrington. Mr. Dennis Harrington will be next.
I am Judy Harrington. I live at 7890 Bluebird Road. My property and our property is right next to where this industrial park is wanting to go into. It's going to be placing these huge buildings 300 feet from my house. If you think that is an improvement, I don't mind seeing houses and homes come in. I'm not opposed to the zoning and people moving into the area. What I'm opposed to is being forced to take this industrial park and have to live right next to it with all of the bad things that will be brought into. They talk about bringing us a store. We have a Dollar General there, right across the interstate from us. And what I'm, my concern is they're wanting a big truck terminal to be put into there. What do you think that's going to do to our traffic? What do you think it's going to do to I-40 going east? Almost weekly, there's an accident on that interstate and it shuts you down to where you sit. you sit. I only live 10 miles from the city, but there's times when it takes you a couple hours. I've sat on that interstate at night coming from work and waiting to try to get home. There's no other way to get there. Once you're on that road, you're locked in. Why don't we take a look at what happened at Mount Juliet? We don't have those four lanes. They're not even proposing making those four lanes all the way out there. So what's going to happen just with your traffic? Not to count on all the additional trucks that's going to be getting off of that interstate. And we, as in, as residents in that area, will have to deal with it. The traffic has already increased intensely. In fact, and it would have been my fault, but I was almost hit getting my mail just about four weeks ago. And I, like I said, I'll admit, it was my fault because our driveway is on that hill. And I'd gone across and gotten the mail. There was a truck coming from one way, and I focused on that truck, and I stepped right out on that road. What I didn't do was I hadn't looked to the other side. And the only thing that made me aware of what was happening was when he locked his brakes up. I'm just one resident on that road. When you've got more and more traffic that you're going to put out in that area, this is going to be a common thing. We have to cross the road to get our mail.
Thank you, Ms. Harrington. Your time is up. Thank you. Dennis? Mr. Dennis? Mr. Dennis, no. Glenda, Ms. Glenda Bowes, if I said it right. Scott Holcomb will be next.
Glenda Bowes, I live at 8172 Bluebird Road.
Could pull the mic down closer, please? Thank you.
I'm scared to death.
Oh, you're all right.
My son is in the Marines, and I have some show and tell here. This is a message that was sent from our last meeting. It pretty much, you know, he says, "Thank you, that means a lot. It would be more to me," and more than a slap in the face. I'm just trying to help get his voice heard too, from over the other side of the world. This is my property here. This is the Harringtons here. Even if we get city water run down that road, I'm still going to be out. I have a quarter of a mile of driveway, and that's going to take a lot of money to get water even to my house. I have well water, and I'm okay with that. My son, you know, this is his home too. He is back here all the time, hunting, camping. He's in the Marines, you know, he's sighting his guns. And there's going to be warehouses down here. And, you know, it's going to be too much. I'm sorry, I'm trying to go fast.
You're okay.
More schools. We're going to need more taxes. This is just some Google posts. I mean, I didn't know how to show them, but this has already been an issue with the trucks on the back roads for years now. The last one I got is dated back to '22. This is looking at my front door. Right over this tree line is going to be one of the warehouses. Right out front, there's a big lit-up sign that says "Peace on Earth." That's what we're trying to preserve. This is our peace. This is our sanctuary. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glenda. Scott Holcomb. Jack Lowery Jr. will be next.
Scott Holcomb, 5425 Trousdale Ferry Pike. I live about a mile from where this entrance is going to be. I sit out on my porch, and I watch traffic, cars, because that's what we do out there, you know what I'm saying? There's not a whole lot out there. What this comes down to is money. It's all about money. The developers, you know, they wouldn't be doing this if it wasn't about the money. I took about five minutes, and I looked around, and I don't want Wilson County to be known as the industrial capital of the world. And that's what it's coming down to. If you look around us, we've got industrial parks everywhere. I mean, you can't swing a dead cat without hitting one. All right? We've got about 4 million square feet of unoccupied industrial space right now, and this developer wants to come in and build another 10.5 million square feet at a, in a place where nobody wants it. They can promise, I've read their proposal, I've read their solicitation, I've read their, the letter to Tennessee, to the FFA, and all that kind of stuff. If you read it, they're not saying that they agree with it. If it goes through, they'll have to deal with it, just like us. And I'll be honest with you, I don't want to deal with it. I've raised my seven kids in that house. All right? And I want to keep living there. You can't, if you don't live out there, you don't understand the demographics and how things are laid out. You can't, tractor trailers, you just about have to get off the road if a tractor trailer comes down, and they come down both Trousdale and Bluebird every time there's a wreck on that interstate. I can sit on my front porch, and I know exactly when a wreck's happening, because everybody comes down our road. Now, it's a free world, yeah, you can do that. But our road is not made for tractor trailers, and they can say whatever they want to, but it's going to happen. All right? Go look at Glaveville. They can promise every, they can give everybody a bunch of free stuff, okay? Because it's no, it's no skin off their teeth. But it is off ours. When they're long gone, we're still going to be there dealing with it. And we're just getting kind of tired of it. All right? We've expressed our opinion. Everybody in here is going to express their opinion. Okay? If y'all vote for it, you vote for it. I understand progress. I do. I come from a place where, very similar to this. And, yeah, I'm an outsider. Okay? But at least when I moved in here, I, you know, I raised my family. I didn't go up and start tearing everything up, doing everything, and trying to change our community. Okay? We don't have a red light out there. Okay? You come down there in the morning, you got a crossing guard. Where else do you get crossing guards? Okay? So what do you go do? You go put up red lights? You go four-lane Trousdale?
Mr. Holcomb, your time is up.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Jack Lowery Jr. Jim Goodall will be next.
Mayor Hutto, Commissioners. I'm here to speak on behalf of certain residents that live in this community who are in opposition to the Hillwood proposal. I also live in this community, and I'm here personally to speak against this item. As you know, Hillwood is before you tonight because they were denied these requests by the Planning Commission. Their requests were to amend the current land use plan, and then to rezone over 1,000 acres at Linwood. The request was denied, did not receive staff approval at that level because it didn't comport with the current land use plan. And it didn't, it was not in keeping with the zoning that was in place. The Planning Commission thoroughly vetted this action, and for those reasons and others, they voted eight to two to deny amending the current land use plan and deny rezoning this property. They did the work, and they got it right. This matter is now before you, and I submit that you should follow your Planning Commission's actions and affirm their denial of this project. Courts have routinely upheld decisions of county commissions where they have followed their land use plan and their zoning. This is solid ruling by your Planning Commission, and something that you should follow. There may be discussions about a future land use plan tonight, but that's not here. That hasn't been vetted by this legislative process and enacted. In short, this is not a complex consideration. It is not unique. It is spec warehousing development. They've asked you to approve over 10 potential uses. They don't even know fully what will go in here. Responsible development doesn't, a gas station doesn't rely on this. Water lines don't rely on this. Jobs need housing. This is not a complex issue. This is simply like Sesame Street. There was a skit, four blocks, three people were doing one thing, and one person was doing something different. The simple question is, which one of these doesn't belong here?
Your time is up, Mr. Lowery. Thank you. Mr. Jim Goodall. Stephen Goodall will be next. Mr. Jim Goodall now.
Hope y'all don't mind me standing up here in front of you. I'm Jim Goodall, Wilson County Clerk, and also Tucker's Crossroads resident. We're talking tonight about the zoning, and it come up to my mind, I said, "What if we didn't have any zoning in Wilson County? What would you do?" Y'all got an answer to that? What would you do? If you ain't got any zoning, what would you do? Zoning laws come into existence because they come the most effective way to protect the communities and the quality and the character of the life in the neighborhoods. Zoning's most general purpose is to separate residential property from commercial use. And we, as the citizens of Wilson County, are allowing our government to uphold these zoning laws, to protect us from such stuff that arises. One Tennessee government website reads the following: "The purpose of zoning, the primary goal of zoning laws is to separate incompatible land uses, such as mixed-in industrial warehouses alongside land zone for residential homes and farmland. Separation helps to reduce the conflict between the different land uses, such as noise, traffic, pollution." This sounds exactly what we're meeting about tonight. The zoning is in place to protect crossroads. And I've asked you not to rezone and to continue to protect, protect the residents and landowners with the zoning laws that's in place now. I believe changing the zoning from residential, commercial, or industrial with its surrounding parcels, or residential and agriculture, is to be found inconsistent with the uses that's in place now. I believe a zone change is not appropriate because surrounding property owners will suffer economic harm from the rezoning. It is also unjust to change the land use classification totally different from the surrounding area for the benefit of one landowner to the detriment of the other, the owners of the other people. Lastly, I will not have any benefit, public benefit, to the residents of Tucker's Crossroads. They will not benefit anything. Since it does not follow the Wilson County current land use plan, I ask you to honor the negative recommendations from the Wilson County Planning Commission on June 24, and vote tonight to rezone and to leave the current zoning in place to protect the landowners and the citizens of Tucker's Crossroads. Thank you.
Stephen Goodall. Rob Mitchell will be next. Stephen Goodall.
Stephen Goodall, 8152 Trousdale Ferry Pike. I'm the assessor of property, but I'm speaking as a private citizen of Tucker's Crossroads tonight. Thank you to all the commissioners who have listened to the concerns of the people. Normally, I would say you have a tough job on, on decision-making, but I think tonight the people of Tucker's Crossroads have made that job easy for you, being so clear of what they want and what they don't want in their community, and almost unanimously opposing the rezoning. I know sometimes it's not clear what your constituents want, but in this case, it's unmistakable and without question. Seven miles of waterline, 14 houses, only two homes of which are in favor of the largest, of trading water for the largest industrial park in Wilson County. I pray there are no commissioners that would vote to destroy an entire community, instead side with an out-of-state developer in exchange for providing water for two homes, when clearly the majority of the community is against the rezoning. No industrial park signs in just about every property. The numbers are 95% or higher against the rezoning. Any commissioner considering voting for in favor of the rezoning is a cause for concern. Wilson County Government encourages the citizens to be involved. You tell us, we may write letters or emails to our county commissioners to share ideas and let our concerns known about the issues that are important to us, helping commissioners know that their constituents, what their constituents want and what to expect from Wilson County Government. We have compiled signed petitions with overwhelming evidence from community, from the community that the rezoning is unwanted. Based off the previous negative recommendation by the Wilson County Planning Commission, and with overwhelming evidence of opposition to the rezoning, why would any commissioner consider voting yes? There are none so blind as those who will not see. The phrase means that someone who actively avoids seeing the truth or reality of a situation that is as blind as someone who literally cannot see, implying that will for ignorance is as detrimental as physical blindness. County commissioners are unique. They are elected officials who have a fiduciary duty to represent the population of your district's needs and wishes. In Tennessee, county commissioners represent the districts that they are elected to and not themselves. You are our representatives. I know some of you may feel like you're doing the right thing by using Hillwood to pick up the tab for the water bill instead of Wilson County taxpayers, but I can't agree to destroying the identity of a whole agricultural community for two houses that want water. I believe this is irresponsible. Instead, I ask you to honor the previous negative recommendation voted by the Wilson County Planning Commission, and the fact that it's not in the current land use plan, and more importantly, I ask you to listen to the 95% of the people who have filled out petitions, emailed, called, protested, drove tractors in parades, and attended community events and county commission meetings, and vote how they want their community to be shaped and not your personal political feelings. You are elected representatives for them, and they're, and you are their voice for them. And I believe we are clearly demonstrating to you, our representatives, what we want and what we don't want. Please, don't be so blind that you choose not to see. Thank you.
Mr. Rob Mitchell. Mr. Rob Mitchell, Mr. Perry Neal will be next.
Rob Mitchell? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Rob Mitchell, I'm the Rutherford County Property Assessor. I'm feeling a little bit out of place because I'm before a county commission, and I'm not asking for money. I was asked to come here to speak about my experience with Hillwood. Back in 2015, they brought a development into the Smyrna Airport. We met with representatives at the airport, county attorney. We pointed out deficiencies in their plan, and essentially, what, what we ended up with was a two-year workaround where two state laws were changed in order to make their plan work. Property taxes were collected, and then the county commission refunded the taxes that were collected. By projections, in 2016, there was a million dollars that would be collected in property taxes on those properties. It is a 99-year lease that will cost the citizens of Rutherford County $100 million over the term of the lease. Now, I'm sure you've heard and seen the projections that are put together by advertising agencies, I call them apple polishers, that will tell you that for every $1 abated, you will get $3 returned. If that were true, everything should be abated. You can't do that because it's a lie. There's nothing in statute that says you will get $3 back. There is nothing in any IDB code. Can look and see what's going. If someone tells you they're getting, going to... At about 10 o'clock at night to tank up our gas on a, on a cold and wintry night in December, much like this one, only, as I remembered, it was a bit colder. So I would ask you, please preserve the memory that I had as a 16-year-old moving into middle Tennessee, and keep it as you have it.
Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Perry Neal. Mr. Perry Neal and Mr. Houston Neal will be next.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Perry Neal, 1000 Murphy Lane, Lebanon, Tennessee. As a matter of full disclosure, for the record, I want to say that I've had the honor of serving on the Wilson County Board of Zoning Appeals for over 20 years. Tonight, I am not speaking in that regard. I'm speaking as an adjoining property owner and also a resident of this community. Also, on the record, I want to say, myself and my family, we are the ones that have cattle on the property. We have rented the property and run cattle on it for 15 or 20 years. That's not necessarily the reason I'm here either. I'm here for the long-term future. If you have a chance, maybe turn to page two of your booklet, and I want to discuss that. I'm not going to try to do a lot of talking. I'm going to try to let my pictures do the talking. Page two is a picture that we got off of the developer's website. Two things about this picture is, number one, you can see my house and my farm in it, which is kind of unique and maybe a little special, I don't know. And I am across the interstate. The second thing is this Area D, and I want to turn, if you'll turn to page three, Area D is the land that they're going to be giving to the University of Tennessee. And if you look in the picture, it looks like a really big, pretty green hay field. I don't know if everybody can see that in page three, Area D. In the real world, that's all trees and woods and a big hillside. If you'll turn to the next page, I have Area D highlighted according to why Hillwood has represented it on their public, and right beside it is the way it looks with Google Earth. It's covered up with trees, hills, and woods. I've got a quick note here that I want to read, if I can find it right here. I want to quote, this is a letter that Dr. Dale from the University of Tennessee turned in to the planning commission. So it says, and I quote, specifically, this is Dr. Dale from the University of Tennessee, specifically, "The 285-acre tract would be best utilized for agricultural purposes. This could also benefit our UT research team in beef production and crop production." He's talking about 285 acres that looks like it belongs in the Smoky Mountains. It's great, pretty land. Rest assured, it's not going to work for crop production or livestock production. And I think I've got proof in these pictures here, you know, about how trustworthy these guys have been on the radio every day, and everything they talk about is how trustworthy they are and everything else. One quick more comment, and I'll sit down. There's two groups of people here. One group is for it, one group is opposed to it. People that are opposed for it are opposed to it because of the love of Wilson County. The people that are for it are for it for the love of money. Thank you.
Jack Pratt will be next. Houston Neal.
If you don't mind, please go ahead and turn to page nine in your booklet. Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. My name's Houston Neal. I live at 300 Murphy Lane, pretty much right across the interstate from this proposed development. And first and foremost, I just want to thank y'all. I know this is a hard topic, and I'm sure everybody's ready for it to be over. Three points I want to cover tonight. I'm actually going to, first two, real quick, just the planning commission. Eight, too, we need to make sure that holds a lot of weight. The land use plan, again, it doesn't fit the intended growth or the vision of the community. And then third, I want to concentrate on this, page nine. I'm actually a practicing civil engineer, been doing it for 12 years, and I'm just really concerned about the flooding that this will bring. You know, I grew up in the area. I've seen it firsthand. I know it's going to flood, and, you know, there's just no way with 12 million square feet of rooftop, that's 275 acres, that that's not going to impact surrounding properties. So they say a picture's worth a thousand words. So on page nine there, on the left side, you can see this is where Jennings Fort Creek leaves the proposed development. Then on the right side, I'm basically showing my dad's property, and encircled in red, kind of in the middle, there's a barn there. Keep that in mind for the next page. Skip over to the next page. Now you can see real-world pictures here, 2020. You can see how the floodline pretty much goes up to that barn, so it validates that FEMA flood map we were just looking at. So as you can tell, this is more like a river than a creek. And one other thing I want to point out here, picture on the right, you can kind of see on the right side just the white water. This water is moving across that road really fast. There's a lot of speed, a lot of velocity. You know, that's going to cause a big safety issue, somebody trying to cross this. So, flip over, the next page, page 11. My point on these is, we validated the FEMA flood map, and now we show all these houses. You can see there's a lot of red circles there. All these houses are basically right on that floodplain. So there's a lot of people you're going to impact here. And then on the last page, I'm showing Swindle Hollow Bridge, basically, again, 2020, that flood, it went over that bridge, created a lot of damage there. I'd say if you put this in there, it's going to take out that bridge. And I want to end on, you kind of see my son there, no farms, no food. He told me to say to y'all, please say no to this and save the farmland. Thank you.
Mr. Jack Pratt. Mr. Jack Pratt and Kaylee Pratt will be next.
Mr. Mayor, members of the county commission, I stand before you tonight to ask you not to vote for this zoning change. I'll do that for three main reasons. First, it is not in your current county land use plan. Second, as Mr. Goodall mentioned, in June, your appointed planning commission denied it mainly for that reason. And also, as Houston just talked about, there is an increased risk of dangerous flooding along Jennings Fort Creek. I also want to talk to you tonight a little bit about the character of our community. My family moved to Tucker's Crossroads in 1976. It was Jack Senior, Judy Pratt, and me. I was a little over a year old. They moved there and bought a farm that was about 96 acres, sight unseen and didn't know a soul. But soon, they become part of that community. And at that time, that farm had an address of Box 50, Trousville Ferry Pike. Like I said, we didn't know anybody when we moved there. But we soon got to know folks, and we got to learn that our neighbors weren't just neighbors, they were more like family. Many of you have been to the orchard that we've planted there. We planted that when I was about four years old. And I was sitting there helping my parents dig those holes and plant those trees. That was hard work. And I looked over at my mom, and I said, man, I wished I had a brother or a sister to help me with this. And she said, look over the hill, bubba. Here comes three of your brothers right there. That's when Powell, Phil, and Perry Neal came with shovels on their shoulder. They dug in there and they helped us that day, and they've always helped us. I learned that they were my brothers, but they had a different name. I later on learned I had more brothers and sisters with different names, like Dowell, Scruggs, McDaniel, Poston. You know, that peach orchard today, Commissioners, has an address of 5,000, Trousville Ferry Pike. So I would say that Tucker's Crossroads has grown. I guess people know the secrets out of what a fine community we have. We've got other brothers and sisters with different names, names like Williams, Waitrick, Derrick, Hodge, even a Lowry or a Cherry we let in the community. You know, this summer, I was at the peach orchard, and I had a young couple come up, and they was buying their produce, and they said, man, is this heaven? And I said, no, sir, it's Tucker's Crossroads. In Genesis 2:15, it says, Lord God took man into the Garden of Eden to tend and keep it. I ask that you allow us to continue and tend and keep the Garden of Eden we have. Thank you.
Kevin Gaines will be next.
See, the speaker is in this family. I'm Kaylee Crowder. I've worked on energy policy since-
promises that you've heard. The one I'm addressing is jobs and the startlingly specific number of 3,444 jobs that they say are going to be created here. I find that difficult to believe that those number of jobs will be created for a couple reasons. One, they're building on spec, that's on speculation. So it's hard to know how many jobs are actually going to be created. Two, they're saying it's going to be built over 10 years, so how many jobs, what years, et cetera. Third, we have lots of empty warehouse space, 4, 5, 6 million square feet of empty warehouse space right now, and there are zero jobs in there. And I want to address the range of options of what could come in here, and specifically data centers, because I know that's been one of the possibilities that could come in if y'all decide for this proposal. Microsoft has admitted that a data center has 30, that's three zero, jobs per data center. That's admirable work. These are janitors and security jobs. I don't know that you can afford the rent in Wilson County on those jobs, but in return for those jobs at a data center, you get noise that's not unlike a small municipal airport, power lines, high energy use, which another colleague is going to speak to, potential brownouts, and higher energy bills. Is all that worth 30 jobs per data center? So in 10 years' time, I want to ask you this question. Do you want to look back and say, I supported the number one industry in the state of Tennessee, which is agriculture? Or do I want to turn the gateway to the eastern part of Wilson County into data center alley? Thank you.
Kevin Gaines, and then Ally Poston will be next.
Thank you, Commissioners and Mayor Hutto. My name's Kevin Gaines. I was raised in Mount Juliet, Tennessee, back in the 70s and 80s when it was a one-red-light town, and it wasn't even a red light, it was a flashing light. You might say, how in the world did you end up in Tucker's Crossroads? Love. I married a Tucker's Crossroad girl named Lisa Grandstaff, and her family had a farm there in Tucker's. When we married, we moved out on Bobo Lane, which is right in the heart of this, or right along the edge of this development, or proposed development. We still farm it, soybeans, corn, hay. We're proud of it. My son's here tonight. My grandson spends most weekends out there with me. I'm a Realtor by trade, and I'm not a great speaker. But I pulled my numbers by going and driving through the various industrial parks in this county. I didn't sit behind a desk and fabricate numbers. I went door-to-door in our industrial parks, and I didn't even go to all of them. And then I went back and used software that's available to me as a Realtor, and I pulled more data off sites like Crexxy and LoopNet. And the numbers that I came up with were over 9 million available square feet that's being marketed. In addition to that, we've got 1,000 acres that's been rezoned industrial in this county just since 2020. 1,000 acres. Years ago, our county planners said that this area was to be zoned and kept as agricultural. In June of this year, our county planners again voted it down, eight to two, potential rezoning. This area has a strong, proud heritage of agriculture. It's not broke, and it don't need fixing. Thank you.
Ally Poston. Ally Poston, Jim Key is next.
My name is Ally Poston. I live at 1077 Bobo Road. My family has proudly called Tucker's Crossroads home for four generations. As many in our community recognize, one of the key selling points of Hillwood is its promise to extend water lines to properties near the proposed site. Currently, there are 14 houses in that area that lack water access, and among the property owners, only two have shown interest in connecting to Hillwood's water supply. For a detailed look, you can look in on page 13 to see the locations of those properties and the ones that oppose it, and the proposed route for the water line. My family has lived here for four generations without city water, and we have been perfectly content, perfectly fine, perfectly healthy. We know there are alternative ways for surrounding properties to access water and various opportunities for obtaining it in the future. We are willing to do the work with our county and our community to one day get that water. Allowing an out-of-town developer who does not prioritize our community's best interests is simply not the right solution to this issue, and we will not be swayed by promises of water lines. I envision raising a family of my own on our farm, and I refuse to accept a future filled with constant light and noise pollution, surrounded by warehouses and unsafety. While I understand that the area around us may not always remain farmland, we deserve better options than this development. Many may believe this is the ideal choice, but until you have faced this issue firsthand, it's clear that all of us would choose to welcome new homes and neighborhoods over this proposal. We stand firm in our commitment to protecting our community and our way of life. So I urge you all to listen to these community members and the previous negative recommendation to vote against rezoning. Thank you.
Jim Key. And Dr. Roy Terry will be next.
My name is Jim Key. Wife is Linda. We live on 4350 Big Springs Road. That property has been farmed by her family for over 100 years. We've been there 20 years. My concern is environmental and quality of life impact. Let me state my qualifications. Forgive me, I have degrees in physics, mathematics, and nuclear physics from Vanderbilt and Auburn. I've spent 40 years working in environmental and public radiation protection. Clients include U.S. Nuclear Industry, Department of Energy, Department of Defense, Center for Disease Control, Canadian Atomic Energy Agency, Japanese Atomic Research Institute. I've dealt with many contamination incidents over these 40 years. I have received two industry awards, including a lifetime achievement award. Sorry for that. I just wanted to make sure you understood that what I'm going to say, I know what I'm talking about. Regardless of the industrial use, I expect a credible environmental impact study to be performed prior to any work starting. Given my expertise, I formally request to be involved in the details of any planned environmental study. Concerns: Warehouse, airborne environmental impact, estimated 100 trucks per day, 3,000 trucks per year. We've already had two air quality alerts in Wilson County this year. It's not going to get better, folks. Impact of diesel exhaust. It's 100 times more toxic than gasoline exhaust. It has results in public health risk as well as decreased in agricultural yields. This is documented. Particulate fallout is a problem. If you want to know about that, ask me. Water impact: Will impact both surface and groundwater. Rainwater runoff will transport contaminants to the soil, surface, and groundwater. Capture basins that everybody talks about are insufficient to protect surface and groundwater. Ask me. Data farm requires huge electrical power. Likely farmland will be seized by eminent domain to facilitate power transmission. Suggestion was made to restart Hartsville Nuclear Plant. I have no objections to that. However, the reason that plant was canceled was it was determined that there's insufficient flow on the Cumberland River to ensure that that plant stays safe. Let's see. Huge backup diesel generators are required for data centers. These are very, very polluting. They're worse than trucks. Ask me. Data centers have staggering cooling requirements. Groundwater, if it's cooled that way, you're looking at contamination. Mechanical cooling, more electricity. Public safety concerns: Fire at a warehouse or data center will result in releases of toxic smoke, soil, and surface water contamination. Ask me. It will be necessary to address potential evacuation of the local area due to toxic smoke. Consider Tucker's Crossroads Elementary School. Quality of life impact: This is not well defined, but can be litigated.
Thank you for that. Dr. Terry is next. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Terry Bay will be after him.
Dr. Roy Terry, 2755 Old Rome Pike. I live in the community just north of Tucker's Crossroads, this area of development. I'm impressed about all the people that have been here today. I don't know if y'all are, but I'm pretty impressed. And I'm impressed of all the people that have shown up here today. There was some talk about, didn't matter who showed up, but these people have shown up again and again for these meetings and have put money into it, their time, and taken time away from their families to be able to support this proposal against the rezoning. And I think that's important for y'all to- And I think that's important for y'all to consider as representatives of the people of this community. The one thing I talked about at the last meeting was the development costs, and they've made a lot of projections about how much money this would bring, and I think that's great, but there's nothing that's ever been said about how much it's going to cost to develop the roads, or the schools, or the water lines. And I've also have taught some people in the water system, and y'all may know better than I, but there was some concern that the water system has some issues with providing adequate flow to our side of the county anyway. And that may be something y'all can look into in the future. I think that, you know, the developers that came and said at the first meeting that they would come and leave if the community was not interested, but they're still here, and they're still pushing to try to develop this community. You know, in medicine, we have to make good decisions, and we have to use the evidence that we have to make those good decisions and do what we need to do for people. And I think as Commissioners, y'all have gotten plenty of evidence and plenty of information to go and vote against this. There's a lot of anxiety in the community about this. It's Christmas time. I think y'all need to give the community a gift and relieve a lot of this anxiety and relieve a lot of this stress that's been on the people. Thank you very much.
And Kyle Neal will be next.
Wow. All right. First, I want to thank the Commissioners, and I want to thank you for your time and your due diligence. You've got a tall order on your plate tonight, and I commend you, and it's a tough decision, I'm sure. I am Kerry Bay, 211 Hartman Drive, owner of two manufacturing plants here in Lebanon, co-owner of an FBO, Direct Flight Solutions, with my beautiful wife, Heather, out at the Lebanon Airport. I, myself personally, along with a lot of business owners, are not in favor of this and do not approve this. I could go on and on about the reasons, but because Kerry Bay doesn't want it doesn't mean that that's a reason. Just because your pastor may want it, that's not a reason. Just because your hairdresser may want it, or whatever it is, it's not a reason to approve or disapprove. Do I think there will be salary impacts from this? Absolutely. And as a business owner, I see that the trickle-down and the bleeding in to job placement could be really tough for us as business owners and people of this community that have been here. Is that a reason? That's debatable. This is not debatable. And I want to ask every one of the Commissioners this question. Before you vote, you've heard it, Mr. Lowry said it, I think Kevin Gaines said it or whatever, before you vote, do the rules and regs and land use support a yes? I think we know the answer to that. But ask yourself that before you vote. How many people does Hillwood say they're going to move into this community? How many houses are they going to build here? Can you in good conscience vote yes without blinders and without looking the other way? But I want to touch the people that are on the fence. If you are on the fence with this, then vote no. You have to be 100% supportive of this in order to vote yes. If you're not 100% on board with this, then you should vote no. If you've got that one little percent in there, you should vote no. If your mind is made up, I congratulate you, and I applaud you, and I will respect you. But if you don't know, vote no. That's what I ask, and I think the community asks, so they deserve that. Thank you very much.
Kyle Neal. Mark Sandifer will be next. Kyle Neal.
Hello. I was born and raised in Tucker's Crossroads, went to Tucker's Crossroads Elementary School, and have a co-owner of some land adjacent to the proposed development. I'm also, currently I work out of state in New Mexico, and I flew in just to be here tonight. I am a civil engineer by training. I have a PhD from Vanderbilt University in Civil Engineering. I want to second the concern that was raised about flooding. I think the Jennings Fork Creek does have a history of flooding. I think this will increase that flooding issue. The second civil engineering concern is regarding the roadways. Obviously, if we can get the trucks on the interstate, that's the ideal scenario, but we know those interstates get backed up, there's accidents, and then the vehicles get on the county roads, and the county roads are not equipped to handle those loads. I looked up in the transportation engineering guide, the easel equivalent, single-axle load. And so for one fully-loaded tractor-trailer truck, that's equivalent to 9,600 passenger cars. And so this will do, will be detrimental to the roads. They're not equipped to handle that, and that'll be an expense the county has to take care of. The second thing I wanted to bring up more on a personal level, as someone who wants to move back to Tucker's Crossroads in the future, start a family like so many people are doing, and people have moved from all over the country. I know people from New York, Oregon, I'm in New Mexico, who want to be in Tucker's Crossroads, the proximity to Nashville, but being out of the city in a rural setting. These people moved in part because there was not an industrial park in Tucker's Crossroads. And so those people are going to stop moving to Tucker's Crossroads, and that's concerning because they bring human capital. And these are the people that are invested in the community, they're going to start businesses, and this is the future growth for the county. If you want to know what it looks like to turn Tucker's Crossroads into an industrial park, you can look at other areas around Tennessee. You can look at Laverne, you can look at Old Hickory, and Wilson County is no exception. The same thing will happen. We do not need this. I would prefer Tucker's Crossroads and Wilson County to look forward, to look at Williamson County, where the second wealthiest county in the state. Williamson County is not bringing any of these types of developments. Also, the growth as it is, is, as you know, Lebanon in 2023 was one of the 15 fastest-growing cities in the nation, and so we don't need to expedite the growth by this rezoning. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Mark Sandifer. Mark Sandifer and Phil Neal will be next.
Good evening. Mark Sandival, 4778 Trazo Ferry Pike. First, as it regards Hillwood, the evidence hasn't been done. I've spoken to other developers, and they've told me that it's common in other counties, even those in middle Tennessee, that an economic impact study, as others have mentioned, should be done, and not just by them, for obvious reasons. In addition, there should be a traffic study and a density study. Paid for by them, yes, but selected by a third party, by us, the community and the Commission. As others have said, I-40 is already beyond capacity between Lebanon and Cookeville, especially this area, when it goes from four lanes down to two. It's already at capacity, or beyond capacity, many days. We have places in Wilson County already with these types of developments. 840 and 109, North Hartman Drive off the bypass come to mind. This may be consistent with those locations. It's not consistent with Tucker's Crossroads. Speaking of 840 and 109, I work at Wilson Central High School. There's another warehouse going up close by. Just one-on-one, another older, more experienced teacher came to me and said, make sure you take pictures of your classroom walls. Right? That way, we'll have evidence if and when those cracks start coming, that it's coming from that blasting. She's been a teacher at other schools where this has happened. If that's going to happen by one warehouse, imagine the homes and the farms and the land, the destruction that's going to cause, not to mention our kids and our school at Tucker's Crossroads. Please remember the planning commission's recommendation, or remember Hillwood's only in it to make money, but our community is going to be the one that pays. Thank you.
Phil Neal. Billy McDaniel will be next. Phil Neal.
Phil Neal, a farmer from Tucker's Crossroads. Thank y'all for the job you're doing. Myself and my family has a 50-year relationship with the University of Tennessee and University of Tennessee Agriculture in particular. We go back for years with many, many of the men that have worked there. And to hear them, according to Hillwood, UT is now against farmers and is supporting out-of-state industrial parks, according to them. I look here, according to them, Hillwood is now supporting rezoning agricultural land to industrial land. According to Hillwood, that's what UT is supporting and wanting. But I look around, and I don't see any of my friends from UT there. Charlie Dill and me are close, Keith Harrison, Lucas Holman. They're not here on their behalf because they're on our side. I guarantee you, any farm agency, especially UT Agriculture, they're on the side of the farmers. They're not on their side. It's smoke and mirrors is all they blow at you. I'm going to read you here a text from Charlie Dean, sent on Thanksgiving Day. I have also discussed with Hillwood folks and have asked them to remove the UTIA, University of Tennessee Institute of Agriculture, logo from their PowerPoint they are using. That way, no one will misconstrue the logo being an endorsement of the project. I guarantee you, none of them are here, and none of them are going to be here tonight because they're on the side of the farmers. And while they keep saying, they also brought up FFA and 4H. We talked to Chelsea Rose, John Rose's wife, maybe three months ago. She's the head of the state FFA. And we're asking, is it true y'all are supporting Hillwood? She said, no, we never supported Hillwood. Chelsea Rose actually had to send them a letter saying, hey, we support farmers, we do not support Hillwood. And it's smoke and mirrors. I think Hillwood bought a ham at the fair somehow, and they thought, I guess they had their support. Everything they tell us is smoke and mirrors. I would not believe them, anything. Quickly moving along, I have one expertise that I kind of work on. I like dealing with numbers. I am a numbers guy. I figured, what would it cost to bring Tucker's Crossroads area, the roads in that area that are within one mile of the proposed industrial park? What would it cost to bring them up to par with the roads we have down around 840 and 109, where we do have industrial parks? Y'all have roads down there ready for it. On ours, there's eight roads, I don't have time to name them, in that area, not counting I-40. There's eight local roads less than a mile from the proposed park. In order for us to start with, we'd have to buy right-of-way, all of them had to be widened. We had to cut a lot of the hills. A lot of them have blind spots to go hills, you cannot see them. We had to widen the roads, add shoulders, widen the bridges. At the minimum, it would cost $225 million to bring it up to what it needs to be.
Thank you, Phil Neal. Appreciate you. Thank you. Rayanne Owens will be next.
My name is Billy McDaniel. I live on Bluebird Road. On this booklet here, page seven, is in front of my farm, and over here on page eight, Wilson County has changed. Bluebird Road has not. It's 12 to 15 foot wide. The trucks, the mirror-to-mirror, it's nine foot. They had to get way over to pass each other. There's two blind heels and one blind curb between the Lynnwood and town that trucks just can't see each other. And that's all I've got to tell you. Thank you.
Thank you. Rayanne Owens. Nancy Grandstaff will be next.
I'm Rexanne Owens. I live at 1,000 Murphy Lane. And I moved in here to live in a country, a country setting. I do have to work outside of the city. I have to travel to Nashville to work. I'm a nurse. And just last week, there was a wreck rerouting me down Bluebird. If I had met an oncoming truck or any other cars, the road is just not safe. It's not conducive to have a lot of traffic rerouted off the interstate going up and down there. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Nancy Grandstaff. And Delane Davenport is next.
All right. Friends, Commissioners, Mayor Hutto, and countrymen, lend me your ears. I'm Nancy Grandstaff, and I have something to tell y'all. I'm the youngest of five children, and I live off Lynnwood Road. I don't have city water, though. I have lived here all my life, 66 years now. My father, Edwin Grandstaff, ran the land in question for 30 years. I grew up on that land. I know all about it. My father tried to sell it to Mr. Kenneth Neal years ago for $2 million. Then he again tried to sell it to Powell, Perry, and Field. I don't know exactly how much they asked for it, but I know he tried to sell it to them because he told them it was going to get developed. They said it was too much money, they couldn't do it. But they're trying to control land they don't own. I don't understand that. When Hillwood first came to me, they asked me what our community needed. I said water and a convenience store. They are promising to give the residents of Wilson County a gift of water, which costs around $15 million. I can't think of another instance where our company has come into a community and offered to bring what we need, and they are trying to. Other properties and families will receive this water, and the other neighbors will have their quality of water improved. We all know this land is going to be developed. My father saw this in 1997. He told me it was going to get developed back then. And he told me, he said, you can't expect that land right off the interstate not to be developed, especially when it's not owned by one person. I know the realtors on the other side, Kevin Gaines, Justin Davis, they want it to be houses because of the money that they could possibly make off of it. But the houses, fellas, that's going to be a big mistake. 2,200 homes will create a mass of traffic and a problem with schools because where are you going to put those 11.7 kids off of those 2,200 homes? My father made me promise to give him, to tell me, to make sure I came and fought for water. Please let us have our water at Hillwood's expense. Let them build their warehouses. Though many of you know, I don't have water, and I've never had water at my house. I feel like I'm living in a third-world country because I have to haul my water in small jugs that I used to cook and drink with. People in my own family even make fun of my struggle. I don't find it funny at all. People don't know what it's like to live without water, but I could buy shoes. And many people opposing this project have water, so they minimize my struggle. Some of my family who support this project have been intimidated online.
Grandstaff, thank you so much.
And our property damaged.
Delane Davenport will be next. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Delane Grandstaff-Davenport, and I live at 202 Cedarway Drive in Lebanon. I live in Contiki subdivision. I have two different parcels of land that this could affect. In January of 2006, there was a proposed subdivision to be built out in this area for this property, the 1,100 acres. It was approved for, I understand, 2,500 homes, and the subdivision was approved for that with Dell Webb, a golf course, and a subdivision for all the houses. Of course, that would not have affected the school system at that time. So if houses do come, you're going to have to build schools, and you're going to have to build some infrastructure for those schools. The zone property currently for the best plan use for the business plan is high-density residential, and that is what it has been approved for, and that is the long-term plan for it. I'm asking you to support Hillwood to bring the industrial park instead of the high-density residential. I will be affected by the water. I would love to have water. I would love for my aunt to have water to have peace of mind. Growth is coming our way. We cannot stop it. This is the only exit in Wilson County that doesn't have anything in it. You are in a food desert, and that's what you're in. I don't know if y'all know what a food desert is. It means you have no groceries. You have no food. You got all this farm, but there's no food. Where's the food? I don't know. So one family in Wilson County community is benefiting from this property right now, and that's the Neal family. They are the only ones that benefit from this. They run about 60 head of cattle on it, mostly at the time, sometimes not even anything, and they cut it for hay. But the Neils don't sell their beef in Tennessee. They ship it out to the west. They don't sell their beef cattle here. They are 100% shipped. The only one that sells is their nephew. He does beef shares. But the Neils do not sell anything. I rent property to them. They cut hay off of my land currently. The only thing I can say is that growth is on the way. In the Wilson Post from May of 2006, it said, there was a quote in there, "Wilson County is growing in leaps and bounds. Our geographic location to Nashville makes us a prime area for both residential and commercial development. It would be crazy for one to think that growth will not take place." And that was quoted by Jack Pratt Jr. about the Dell Webb subdivision that was coming. Growth is on the way. We can either embrace the change and have control, or we can build a bunch of homes with all kinds of builders on that high-density residential. It's not going to stay agriculture, and I don't think that's what people understand. Tax abatement, that's within your control. That is completely in the county commission's control if you want to do tax abatement on these warehouses. But we need water on our property. It's the least that we can have. Water and wastewater board is not coming. Thank you.
David Taylor. David Taylor is next. John Allen Regard is after David.
Good evening. My name is David Taylor. I live-
I live at 302 Bluefield Lane here in Lebanon. And I really, as I say, don't really have a dog in this hut, other than I live in Wilson County and been a Wilson County resident for almost 50 years now, raised my kids here. And the one thing that I have seen in Wilson County is growth. As some people have mentioned today, one of the fellows talked about all of this coming. If you look back about 20 years ago, thinking Mount Juliet. Mount Juliet had about 1,500 residents in a blinking light, and that was on Lebanon Road. Today, it's as big as Lebanon, and we're right at 50,000 people. And Commissioners and Mayor, some of you know, I'm on Lebanon Planning Commission. I've been chairman, vice chair for 17 and a half years. I have been in your seat. In fact, I was there before I came here tonight. We had our monthly, our monthly meeting. I know exactly what you guys are going through. The decision to make is what's going to happen to the Tucker's Crossroad exit. Growth is coming. What kind of growth is going to be there? Again, look at Mount Juliet, what's happening there? All those folks, it was rural. It was just like Tucker's. Mount Juliet exit off the interstate was just like that. You have to have the growth that doesn't disturb you as much as possible. That piece of road is probably the most prime piece of property on Interstate 40 from Memphis to Knoxville. And some people said tonight, it's going to be developed. You folks, whoops, excuse me, you folks are the ones who are going to have to make the decision tonight as to what kind of development that's going to be. Again, it, as far as I'm concerned, other than being a resident of Wilson County, it's not going to affect me any. It won't affect most of you. But it will affect the county for taxes, cost, and you put 2,000 homes, or up to 2,000 homes in there. It's not just the homes. It's the restaurants, it's the grocery stores, it's the drugstores, and all of that that comes with it. That doubles the population during the day. That puts the traffic in the road every bit as much as the trucks do, and even maybe less. I know the trucks have, will do more damage to the road, but you get more cars, so it kind of balances itself out. And so, all the things that people have said is going to happen, is going to happen either way.
Your time is up. Mr. John Allen Regard.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Next, John Allen Regard. David Saundrie, if I've said that right, is after Mr. John Allen.
Thank you, Commissioner. You know, I've been here about 30, 35 years. I came from a town that's basically, when I came here 35 years ago, was the exact same size that Lebanon was back then. And the reality is, Lebanon and the town I came from couldn't have took two different paths. I saw firsthand what lack of economic growth can do to a community. You know, it'll shutter, shutter businesses. It's high unemployment, lack of opportunity. That's the, where I came from, a small little town. Now, we have seen strategic growth in how it can make a community. And as an employer here in, in Wilson County, I understand how economic growth is essential to our future. We need high-paying jobs. We need people coming in. I've got four children, all finishing up college right now, that I need them to be able to have to come back to our county, be proud of where I bleed, Wilson County, I truly do. Economic, economic development is so important and ideal, and critical to what, to what we do. I understand the ripple effects that 3,000 jobs can have over a period of time. I understand. It may not be day one, but it'll be over a period of time. Plus, the, like someone else talked about the trickle-down, another 3,000 jobs would be, be out there. You know, tonight really is a packed house. I love, I love healthy debate. I really do. Tonight is a packed house, but I really ask the Commission to just not consider the impact of any one individual here, because it's just a small handful of people. There's 10,000s of people out there in this, in this county that are dependent on what you guys decide on tonight. And I ask you to think of the impact of those citizens and those people in our community, and how it's going to provide growth and economic stability to us here in Wilson County. Thank you so much.
David Saundrie is next, and then John Jewell. David Saundrie, if I've said that right, S-A-U-D-U-I. Seeing that, we'll move to John Jewell.
Mayor and Commissioner, I'm from Watertown, John Jewell, Box 96, Watertown, Tennessee. I'm a lifer. I say everybody, I'm dirt in Wilson County. I've been on the planning commission for 30 years. I've seen a lot of developments. I've heard a lot of arguments, and they all sound regrettably the same. People are scared. People are scared of growth. But you've got to have it, you've got to face it, and you've got to deal with it. If you don't face it, if you don't deal with it, you get some tragic situations. And that's the fear I have. I voted for this, proud of it. I would vote for it again. I feel like it's a qualified, a very qualified development, a very reputable development company. They're an international company. I think they're offering some tremendous things for it. Do you like that? No. But we're trying to compromise. We're trying to bend. It's kind of like fighting brush fires. You get out in the woods and they're, they're tyrants, and you start looking for fences and roads to bend things, to make them livable. And that's what we're trying to do with this development and others. I think this development company can do that. I think they have. They're offering, they're not smokestack, dry industries. I like the idea. The least amount of traffic that you will deal with, in my opinion, and that's why I'm in the position I am, is industrial, the proper industrial. I don't want sprawling Nissans out there, and that's not what this is. It's not that kind of development. And so, I, I feel like that we are trying to get the best of a bad situation. It's not that you folks are necessarily worried about your farmland. Don't misunderstand what I'm trying to say. Let me finish first. But it's about your lifestyle. You don't want to lose that lifestyle. I grew up that way. I know a lot of people out there. My dad was pastor of the Salisbury Baptist Church for 50 years, and I, I know the area. I know the area. And I don't like particularly things like that, but it's just like I told somebody at Watertown, we'd like to see that lane, that highway, four-laned out.
Jewell, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Angela Kelly is next, and then Marjorie Thompson is after that. Angela Kelly?
Hello, I'm Angela Kelly. I live on 9110 Trousdale Ferry Pike. Some of you might recognize my name. I've sent you just a couple of emails over the past few months. But I'm going to read a little bit from my last email. My main points in my emails was losing our pride as being Wilson County's agriculture fair. We don't want to lose that pride. We're very proud of it. Keeping our heritage and seeing animals and lands, not metal buildings. The grade school traffic risks. I-40 accidents, wildlife being affected, infrastructure can't handle the traffic. No water to our residents. Once it starts, we can't stop it. And we don't need more jobs. Our county is doing fantastic. But most importantly, I moved here for a reason. When me and my husband moved here, we looked in Davidson County, we looked in Mount Juliet, we looked all over. We had a vision of why we wanted to move here. And we found it here in Wilson County at Tucker Crossroads. There are many of my neighbors that have century farms here. There's the Pratt's, there's the Neils, there's lots of Neils. And by the way, we get our beef from them, and it's very good. I highly recommend it. We met the Dowells, Millers. I mean, they're not just our neighbors anymore. They're our family. And they chose to stay here and raise their families. But we did also, we chose this county specifically for the Tucker Crossroads area. And I'm going to look at every single one of you and ask you to vote for what your people are asking for. I have been told you can't beat big corporate. It's all about the money. That's what it's about. Why are you even trying? So I'm asking each and every one of you, prove them wrong. Prove that you're standing up for the people, for the Tucker's Crossroads community family. Thank you.
Marjorie Thompson. Marjorie Thompson, and then Wendy Miller.
What'd you say?
Marjorie?
Yes, Margray.
Margray, sorry.
I'm Margray Neil Thompson. I live in 2102 Windsor Street in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, good, good evening. My name is Margray Neil Thompson, and I grew up in Tucker's Crossroads on a family farm located on Trousdale Ferry Pike and Bluebird Road. And then he is in the Agricultural Hall of Fame. I mention this to show that my family has been tied to agriculture, that my family has been tied to agriculture in this county for well over 150 years. I am proud of my heritage. I am for the Hillwood project. I own property on the north and south side of the interchange on I-40. Three of my cousins still farm there, the ones they alluded to that sell their beef somewhere. Yet unlike them, I don't feel commercial development, that commercial development of this interchange is a problem. Some people argue that trucking will change this interchange. But we've had trucks on and off this interchange for greater than 50 years. I grew up watching them getting off the interstate, the BP station, gassing their truck up, sometimes spending the night on the back of the BP station. Even when we went to the master planning meeting at Tucker's Crossroads School a couple weeks ago, when my husband and I were returning home, there were two truckers parked for the night on the westward-bound ramp of I-40. This happens routinely. I am confident this interchange can be developed without negatively impacting the rural character of Tucker's Crossroads. Hillwood is proposing to become a partner with Wilson County. And I've watched this in Riverford County. These companies come in, and they have a lot of extra money to support local interests, schools, and businesses, besides the deal they do with you guys. It's in a way only large corporations can afford. They'll build these attractive buildings. You see the pictures. They supply water to the 50 residents that want or desire. They will create 3,400 jobs. And what's key to this is other industries will follow them.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you.
Wendy is next. Willie Harris is after Ms. Wendy.
Hi, I'm Wendy Miller. I live at 817 Wildwood Avenue in Lebanon. I moved to Tucker's Crossroads in 96 and started my salon, my business out there in 2002. If you could look at the pamphlet you've received on page eight, the petition against this development started in my salon with 623 people coming in personally, and we expanded this petition to Wilson County with 1,500 signing. You can see how vast the dots are on the page. The overwhelming negative sentiment from Carthage to Franklin followed us on the no-industrial website to also encourage us to fight against it because of similar warehouses that they are near, that they're, they're near to them. We ask that the character of our area not welcome an industrial industry. I know your job is hard, but if you can envision your loved ones, teens, and parents commuting through a different kind of traffic where they encounter huge trucks typically taking up a lot of the road, you can't straighten out all those curves. I fear the teens traveling that are zoned for, from Tucker's Crossroads over to Watertown, where they are zoned for, they could possibly have fatalities going through their daily trek to school. Thank you for hearing my heart, and please deny this rezoning.
Willie Harris. Willie Harris, I believe, is next. I've said that right. And then David Roberts after.
Hello, I'm Willie Harris. I live at 3880 Linwood Road. I'm from Greenbrier, Tennessee, originally, born in Nashville. I moved out to Watertown a couple of years ago as my dad suffered a couple of heart attacks, and I've been living out here on Linwood. And I don't mean to sound alarmist or anything, but, and thank you for letting me speak tonight, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, but we're living in uncertain times. If you just look at the news, you see all sorts of scary stuff all the time, riling everyone up, drones over New Jersey, rising tensions with China, Russia, Iran, and North Cyber attacks and supply chain disruptions are becoming real threats. Imagine a future where those disruptions escalate. Grocery stores are empty and food is scarce. The answer won't be warehouses or industrial parks. It'll be the farmland that we still have today. Concrete can't cultivate crops, feed families, or foster life. Asphalt won't answer the cries of hungry children. Farmland isn't just food, it's survival. Once land's paved over, it's gone forever. I walk down Bobo Lane almost daily with my senior dog. When I first turned onto it, I meant to go home, was going to go to the dog park, thought it was too far, and all of a sudden, this narrow road just started inviting me down it. First time I walked down it, I thought I was walking through Middle Earth, particularly the Shire, expecting to see Sam and Frodo come tumbling down a hill any moment, saying, get off the road. Captivated by its serenity, it's also one of the few places where I can walk without the fear of being run over by speeding drivers. And now, Hillwood and Ross Pro Jr. want to make the Shire into Mordor, where shadows lie. I guess that would make him sour on. Most days, I only hear nature, birds chirping, the rustling of leaves, but sometimes I hear the groan of the interstate. If this project is approved, noise pollution would worsen, litter would increase, and riffraff already leaving bullet holes in the signs by the bridge on Bobo Lane. That kind of stuff would multiply. The wildlife being pushed back would suffer even more. Watertown thrives as a pastoral paradise, a reprieve from the concrete jungle of Nashville, the ever-expanding jungle, concrete jungle of Greater Nashville. People often move here for open spaces, small-town charm, and the connection to the land. This isn't about opposing prosperity, it's about ensuring that a billionaire's success doesn't come at the expense of our community. After all, I'm sure Ross Pro Jr. inherited his wealth all on his own. I urge the council to vote against this so-called Bluebird Business Park, or as we should call it, the billionaire business park. To all my neighbors, I say, stand together and let them know that paradise is not for sale. And I've learned a lot listening here tonight about people not having water. I think you guys should just give them water with tax dollars. And I think it's ironic, people in Watertown don't have water, and I feel for them. But turning Watertown into Detroit, or Flint, Michigan, as the nuclear guy said, was not an answer.
David Roberts. Thank you. Jason Holloman. David Roberts, and then Jason Holloman will be after that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. My name's David Roberts. I live at 2454 Old Rome Bike, about four miles north of the Linwood Road exit. And I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, don't have anything prepared, but felt like I needed to speak. I've got about 20 years of active duty, most of that in the Guard. Retired. Got four combat deployments in Afghanistan and Iraq. And I say that, say, you know, I normally stay away from crowded places, but I felt like it was my duty to come here tonight because this is important. There's a lot of folks that are scared. You know, it's, it's a quality of life issue. There's a lot of things you have to consider. What this basically boils down to, a lot of common folks and regular families that live on on that side of the county are scared of losing what they have on one side, and people's going to make a lot of money on the other side. That's what this is. Just families in Wilson County and people, a small amount of people going to make money, and a few that want water. Okay? And that's how you should look at this. I spent three years of my life in the Middle East, and I'm telling you, that was to protect my country, but my family as well. And I'm telling you, these folks back here are scared, and they're counting on you to protect them, because you're the only ones that can do it. And you can do it from right where you're sitting, all right? You are their very last hope. And if you vote for this Hillwood to go forward, it's going to ruin that whole part of the county. It's special, it'll never be the same, and you can't undo it. I'm telling you, this is your chance to stop that. Yeah, growth is coming, they can say whatever they want about growth is coming, but I was at that TXR planning thing where the Planning Commission loved this idea of town and country, where you protect the agricultural areas, and then you very specifically put where the growth is going to be. What they're trying to do doesn't fit with what the Planning Commission wants to do in the future, which is protect the agriculture, especially the eastern part of the county, which is what Wilson County is and what it's for. So just remember that, they're counting on you to protect them, like I had to spend three years of my life overseas protecting people back here. My son right now is in Kuwait preparing to board a plane for Syria, and, you know, because of all the stuff that's going over there. My other son's back here, he's in the Guard. My dad was in Vietnam, my grandfather was in WWII, because that's what we do. I mean, I was raised to be a patriot, and I'm asking you to be a patriot.
Jason Holloman will be next.
Thank you, Mayor.
Gage Davenport will be after.
Thank you, Mayor Hutto, good to see you, members of the Commission. My name is Jason Holloman. I'm an attorney in Nashville. I live at 4210 Park Avenue. From 2008 till 2012, I was the city attorney for the city of Mount Juliet. I've also been an elected official in our county commission there, in Davidson County. I've sat where you have and made some of these difficult decisions. And also importantly to this particular project, I own a family farm that's been in my family for 200 years in Smith County, just down the road from where this project is proposed. I understand the complexities of these types of decisions. I've worked with developers, I've represented neighbors in many of these types of discussions, and I'm here to say that I support this project. And the reason that I do is that this is currently agricultural farmland, but by right, you could have 2,000 individual residences on this property. I'm concerned about the impact and the cost of the infrastructure that goes with that type of development, the impact that it has in your county services. And meanwhile, what I'm interested in in this project is that there are 352 acres of agricultural land that will be preserved as part of this. And as you've heard from many of these speakers tonight, it is also a way to access water to dozens and dozens of property owners along this way that currently do not have access to city water. So for those reasons, I think that this has been a thoughtful development project. I think that it has engaged the community. I think there has been a lot of effort to outreach, and I believe at the end of the day, this area is going to develop, and that this is a more appropriate, less intensive, less impactful use on both surrounding property owners and on your city budget, or your county budget. Thank you.
Gage Davenport, and then Brent Baldwin will be after Gage.
I'm Gage Davenport. I live at 202 Cedarway Drive. I've got land just across from this development on the same side of the highway as it. And I would like that everyone should remember that the Department of Transportation just spent $10 million on a new rail yard for Watertown. Now, what does that tell me that Watertown is getting? Infrastructure development. It is either a commuter train to Nashville, so Watertown is going to be yet another suburb of Nashville with more traffic on I-40. What do you think those 2,200 people, those 2,200 homes, residences are going to have? So let's say 4,800 people, almost 5,000. You've got 5,000 new people on the roads like Bluebird, Trouswell Ferry Pike, where people are getting killed, 18-wheelers are driving off the road. There was a tough motor truck that couldn't get passed. So, at the end of the day, really, we have a duty to understand where we're going with this. We have two roads ahead of us. We can either stand on our own as an industry and as a community, or we can let ourselves be swallowed up by newcomers and renters that will do nothing but change the entire face of the community. You get those 2,000, those 5,000 people in, you will have no more Tucker's Crossroads, it won't be Tucker's anymore. Every single person that you see here gathered together as friends and family, every single one of them, you will not have that closeness with that many people in such a small area. You're going to have, what, 2,400 homes on half-acre plots? That's the alternative to this park. If we don't do something about it, we are just kind of left in the dark. We're losing out on money, we're losing out on a lifeblood for our community, and we are missing out on the bigger picture, quite frankly. That's all.
Brent Baldwin, and then Maggie Baldwin will be after.
Brent Baldwin. I live on 867 Bell Road on the west side of this property, my driveway is directly across from it. Thank you, Mayor Hutto, Commissioners. I have some exhibits. They show the true size of this development. This first exhibit shows just one end of the large warehouses. To show the scale, there's a figure of a man and a head of cattle. There's no doubt that this will dominate the landscape. Now, in the next exhibit, this pink rectangle is the actual size of the 1.2 million square foot warehouse. This is just one of the 11 buildings. If you lay it on the square, it reaches from the railroad past this courthouse. If this were to be built right here in Lebanon, this entire building would be inside this warehouse, as would the entire square and all the buildings from here to the other side of the square to the railroad. That's how massive these buildings are. This last exhibit are all the buildings laid over the city of Lebanon. This takes you from the square almost to I-40. There's a Walmart at the bottom, you can see the little white Walmart. It would fit in almost every one of these buildings, two times at least. The developers have implied that their buffers and their quality of construction fit in this area and would be an asset to this area. If you approve this rezone, our gateway from the east will be dominated clearly by large warehouses. You can't hide them. This is out of scale and out of character. Thank you for listening.
Andy Vanshik will be next. Andy, uh, it's Maggie.
Hello, thank you so much. My name is Maggie, and that was my dad, but he didn't make me say this. I want to speak for my generation, Generation Z. I live on Bell Road, right off of Bluebird, and I always have lived there. I hope to keep living there. I'm not the only one of my generation who wants to live on land. I just read articles from Forbes, Business Insider, and New York Times, all talking about the recent shift of Gen Z moving to the country. One Business Insider article says, "Young people are relocating to rural areas." There is also the trend of millennials and Gen Z to move to real communities, not subdivisions. We are leaving the culture of fast-paced and rapid demand. We want a slower life. We want to grow our own food and buy locally. This area and the current land use plan already fits this description of a real community. If you make this decision, it is irreversible. The land is the most valuable part of Wilson County, and voting for this park, that's pretty ironic of a word, voting for this will take the land away from my generation. If we build this, we can never return to the soil, we can never return the soil to what it was. This decision will destroy the community that is there and the community that will continue to form. I hope that my generation will take up responsibility for this land and will keep it from industrial development, if you only give us the opportunity to do this. And yes, it may sound like a sacrifice to a few of us who don't have water, but I'm thankful for the sacrifices of my parents and grandparents, all those sacrifices that they made for me. Thank you, guys.
Andy Vanshik. Tim Leeper will be next.
Hi, Andy Vanshik, 7890 Bluebird Road. Thank you for your time, letting us all have the conversation here. I'm a trucker from college, so based on the gray hair here, it's been a long time, but I'm in trucking. We opened up, one of the conversations is about tax dollars and how this would be better used as a warehouse. If that were the case, then you need to level all of our houses and put warehouses up, and that's not really feasible, right? So I'm not sure it's a good argument. I am a second generation enjoying the property. We have three generations enjoying the property, and we have a fourth generation coming to visit for Christmas, a granddaughter, so looking forward to that. Trucks going down the wrong way on Bluebird happens all the time today with no turnaround, and it's really a problem drives right by our house there on Bluebird Road. Being in the trucking business, my best guess is somewhere between 350 and 700 truckloads a day going in and out. If you think a couple of trucks parked on the off-ramp right now is a problem, just wait. That will be a very good day. So 700 truckloads daily based on a 90-day turnover of inventory, thousands of employees, I think 3,500 roughly was said. Let's just assume there's 3,500 vehicles, 3,000 employees a day going in and out, so that's 6,000, 500 vehicles going in and out, trucks. So if that were the case, you've got 3,500 vehicles, right? That's not including salespeople coming in and out that are selling for the warehouses that are there, it doesn't include salespeople coming in to sell them something, and it certainly doesn't include going out to lunch with the 3,000 employees that work there. So it would be a lot of traffic. I don't think residential homes in the area would have the kind of traffic that we're talking here, not to mention the asphalt, the heat coming off the buildings, the air pollution, the noise pollution, et cetera, et cetera. In a 10-hour shift with just 3,500 vehicles, which I think is on the low side, you're looking at six vehicles per minute, not including the salespeople and lunch calls that I talked There was someone, when this all first started, somebody from the development side, correct me if I'm wrong, said something about, hey, if you don't want us here, then we won't come. Well, I think we've spoken, but yet we continue to speak. And as far as the jobs created, I get it, but there's an awful lot of people looking for employees right now and nobody wanting to work, so I'm not sure that's a good argument either. Thank you very much.
Tim Leeper. Steve and Eli will be next. Mr. Tim.
All right. Thank you to the council, thank you to the mayor. I just want to make a few points. The first thing I want to say is I've spoken to people that have just talked to me, this is not been top of mind for me, but I've spoken to people on both sides of this development, men and women, and there are honorable men on both sides and honorable women on both sides of this development. So I understand it's a hard decision for you guys, but it seems to me that it boils down to either good development or bad development. And I just want to speak to a couple of upsides to the development. To have industrial development, we don't have to educate the children. These people typically, we're not going to have to build extra schools for them if we don't have 2,200, 2,400 houses. Sure, if we don't have to incarcerate them more times than not. And we don't have to have as much of a burden on our fire department as well, and so those are three upsides. And just looking at it from a perspective of something's coming, that seems to be the most practical use of the land. There's also the Cumberland UT Ag Extension proposal, there's also the water for the citizens. They don't have water currently. You know, I understand this is a hard job, but you know, I have a hard time believing that, we live in Wilson County, it's the second richest county in the state of Tennessee, and there's people in this county that don't have water. Also, for the tax base, for the county and economic impact, it's far greater industrial than it is for housing. And I'd like to end with this, I'm not going to take my full three minutes, give somebody else time, but it takes about 30 minutes to drive across town right now anyway, just about no matter where you start from across Lebanon. And so we're going, it's our job to manage that growth, and it falls to this county commission to do that. I don't envy your decision, I understand it's a hard one, but these are just the upsides that I see to the development. Thank you.
Steve and Eli Geary, I believe is right. Kurt Nelson would be next. I said that wrong, please correct me.
Steve and Eli Geary, 934 Old Rome Pike. Eight decades ago, citizens of the area gathered together to witness the defense of Tucker's Crossroads in mock battles that would become known as the Tennessee Maneuvers. Eighty years later, we gather as neighbors and voters to defend the same land from encroachment and development. Much has been said about the detrimental effects of this development on agriculture and the farming industry. Vaguely framed threats and hollow promises have been made by our generation's version of a foreign invader. I hope to illustrate through my personal observations some of the future ramifications that we all stand to face if this development is approved. I work in a logistics management and a brand-new industrial development that is nearly identical to the abomination that is proposed here tonight. Every morning before 4:00 AM, I exit 8:40 into an area that up until a couple of years ago was prime agricultural land and offered some of the best hunting in the county. The few remaining farmhouses are now dilapidated and unoccupied, and the shelters of the are sleeping in their humming calves. As I turn into the industrial park where I'm employed, my headlight dances across scores of deer, stunned and confused, trapped in their unnatural ecosystem by development and industry, their only remaining predators being the perpetual stream of speeding 18-wheelers and starvation. The ever-present noise and light pollution fill the horizon hours before the sun illuminates it. Erosion and drainage problems unchecked and out of control scar the once beautiful and fertile land. Speeding 18-wheelers incessantly pound the relatively new asphalt, decimating and abusing it to a moonscape in a matter of months. Out-of-state companies drawn by geographic location, liberal employment laws, and the promise of cheap labor lease these behemoth warehouses and distribution centers. They pay their employees far below the median income level needed to purchase a home in Wilson County. These workers, many undocumented immigrants drawn from Antioch and Smyrna, take their wages back to their respective counties and do not contribute their tax dollars to the upkeep of the infrastructure that they benefit from here in Wilson County. The environment, roads, and infrastructure that are taxed beyond continuance are of no concern to the out-of-state developers, companies, and commuting workers, instead left to the constituents and taxpayers who actually reside here. While it is true that growth and development is inevitable, we have the ability and moral responsibility to moderate it to a logical and sustainable pace for our children. Commissioners, I employ you and beg you to defend our crossroads culture and history as vehemently as the soldiers who trained here.
Not just another developer, it's not just another company, we are a family-owned developer, a family-owned company that operates based on family values. Family values like honoring our commitments, like trust and integrity. Those aren't just words to us, they are how we operate every day. What that means is rather than thinking about the what, whether it's going to be high-density residential like the plan says now, or C4 commercial, which we think makes more sense, think about the who. Who is going to be your partner throughout this? If you allow us to be your partners, I promise you, we will honor every commitment we make to you, as we always have. We believe in being partners, and we believe in being part of the community. That means, yes, you will see us at the ham breakfast. We're not saying we're part of your community yet, but we want to be, and we will be throughout this process. Isn't that what you want in a partner? We listen. When you're a partner, you listen. We listen to the community. They said they wanted a convenience center and a gas station, we brought in Hal Bone to help us with that. When we needed to do an economic impact study, we went to
When we needed to do an economic impact study, we went to the county, we asked y'all, who do you trust? Who is the consultant that you trust? And that's who we hired. And we know you want to preserve your agricultural history and heritage. That's why we did partner with the groups you've heard about tonight. And yes, we are dedicating 25% of this property. If you believe like most here that this is going to be developed at some point, don't you want someone who's willing to make those commitments and be part of the community? We will do it now, and we will do it throughout the development of this property. Let me finish with this. The zoning and the land use plan, they are important, but they are only part of this. The bigger question is who is the partner that's going to guide this for you? Hillwood should be that partner. We are a family-owned company rooted in family values. This project represents a fantastic opportunity for all of Wilson County, and if you allow us to shepherd it through with you as your partner, I promise you will not regret it. Thank you.
Greg Spawn. And then Derek Kilday.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. My name is Greg Spawn. I'm an architect on this project at 3401 Mallory Lane. And I just want to say I'm very proud for the opportunity to present us with the Hillwood team. I've worked on industrial projects across the country, and by far, this is one of the leading developments I've worked on. If you could, in your presentation or package, please go to slide 14, and I want to show a section cut of the site of the nearest house approximately to one of our warehouses. I know it's on the screen there, thank you so much. I know someone expressed some concern about the proximity to their home of maybe about 300 feet. The house would be the closest, one of the closest ones would be 1,400 feet, which would be almost four football fields away. Also, we would be preserving a lot of landscape buffers and using vegetation to shield the warehouses from the residences. So what we're trying to do as designers is keep the current residents in the as-is condition. Also, what we're trying to do is mitigate as much of the noise and light pollution as possible by using downlights to preserve or stop lighting from going up. So basically, the minimum would be about maybe a little bit of a moonlight, of a foot handle. Also, if you go to slide 15, coming off the highway heading eastbound, the first building you're going to see is the convenience store. And in this presentation, in this slide here, we have our buildings tucked into the landscape using the buffers to shield them from the highway and from the other homes. And if you can go to slide 16, please. This is kind of the entrance going into the park. We're going to, like I mentioned, use the landscape buffers, add more vegetation to preserve noise levels and other traffic noises as well, and shielding the warehouses back into the landscape. And I just want to say that, you know, as an architect and as a developer, you know, we are very concerned about, well, not concerned, but we do want to mitigate the noise and light and sound pollution as much as possible, and that's what we do as professionals to mitigate this for you. So, thank you.
Derek Kilday. And Rob Dobie will be next.
Hi, keep it on slide 12, please. Perfect. Hi, my name is Derek Kilday, and I'm a geotechnical engineer with UES. Our firm has been retained by Hillwood to act as the geotechnical engineer for the development, and if the development moves forward, we'd also be doing the construction materials testing and special inspections during the course of construction. I've been asked to speak about the step system, or essentially the septic system for the development. As you can see on the figure on the screen, there's a whole lot of colors and there's a whole lot of different letters and numbers in orange. I don't want to get too hung up on that, those just identify different types of soils that are present at the development. There's been some question as to whether we could find enough soils on this development to perk and to support the development. To date, we've only explored about 20% of the property, and out of that 20%, we already have enough soils to support the development for the step system, the entire development, just out of 20% of the property. That's the equivalent of about 2,000 homes. So I know that there was some concern that maybe this wouldn't be as high-density a residential development, but the soils will support that type of development. In the yellow area, you'll see the areas that we've targeted for water discharge of the treated water on the property. And right now, that area shown equates to 21 acres, and that's just out of the 20% that we've surveyed so far. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Rob Dobie. And Sarah, I don't know that I can say the last name correctly, so I want Wittrid.
Ty Lucky is the last name there. If you could go to slide 4, please. All right. Hello, my name is Rob Dobie. My address is 921 Main Street, Nashville, Tennessee, and I am part of the Hillwood Community Engagement Team for the Bluebird Business Park. For well over a year now, while Hillwood has continued to refine their development plan and work through the county's permitting process, it has also sought to get involved in the local community and to get to know as many people as possible. And the reason we did that is very simple. We want this project to be something that the community can be proud of and that fulfills the needs of both our direct neighbors and of Wilson County residents more broadly. And frankly, the best way to do that is to go out and talk to people. So that's what we set out to do, you know, to meet with folks from every corner of Wilson County, regardless of whether they were for or against our project, to collect a wide range of feedback and incorporate that feedback into our proposal. And the results of that engagement are very clear. Much of what this project has to offer, from the waterline extension to agricultural preservation area, to the gas station, road realignment, these are the results of brainstorming with neighbors and other community stakeholders. My colleague Sarah and I are here to present about the extent of that engagement, starting with our door-to-door outreach to our direct neighbors. So over the course of several months, my team set out to meet with property owners in the direct vicinity of our property in order to share information about the project, provide a point of contact with Hillwood, and gather feedback on the proposal itself. So we canvassed these homes regardless of the homeowner's stance on the project because the entire purpose here, this entire exercise, was to be open to new ideas and understanding of people's concerns. So in total, we knocked on 118 homes primarily located on Bluebird, Linwood, Bell, Bobo, and Pablo Hill Roads, and you can see those properties here on the map. So we visited many of these homes, you know, we visited multiple times to have follow-up conversations with the property owner or to meet with an occupant who was not at home the first time. So I would say, you know, in total, we made 200 home visits just in this section of the map here. We also visited several homes that are not shown on this map. There are a handful of folks that own property down the street from us but that live in other parts of the county and other parts of the country in some cases, so we knocked on many of those doors as well, but they didn't fit on the map. At every door we knocked, we left a handwritten note that provided our contact information and the reason for our visit, as well as a project flyer containing details and a link to the project website in feedback form. I have copies of those with me today. And for houses where no one was home, we made sure to leave these items somewhere by the front door so that an occupant would be sure to spot them, and we also mailed these items to several of the homes that were inaccessible, for whatever reason, maybe there was a locked gate.
Sarah's next.
Thank you.
And Hal Bone will be after Sarah.
Can I have slide 5, please? Okay. Hi, my name is Sarah Ty Lucky. My address is 141 Nice Drive. As Rob stated, I'm on the Hillwood Community Engagement Team for the Bluebird Business Park, and thank you for the opportunity to discuss our efforts tonight. Our process is focused on a countywide approach to understanding the perspectives of all stakeholders for this proposal. We are proud of what this project represents for Hillwood, the community, and Wilson County. This is what we do. We make projects that communities are proud to have. We've presented our project at Mount Juliet Rotary, at Lebanon Rotary, and at Lebanon Kiwanis. Hillwood is a proud and active member of the Lebanon-Wilson County Ham Breakfast, a sponsor for the Dr. Carey Harbrook Memorial Chamber Summer Scramble, and a sponsor for the Lebanon Breakfast Rotary 120th Annual Fish Fry. Hillwood was also a member of the Taste of Wilson County. Can I have slide 6, please? We develop opportunities and deliver on our promises. This includes our community involvement during and after project construction. Hillwood has been working with Home for Heroes since 2015. Our commitment is to provide two mortgage-free homes for veterans and first responders every year to the Building Homes for Heroes organization in our project communities. The Light the Trail Ride is a cycling event that takes the Hillwood team 1,800 miles down the Mississippi Valley to light the trail for those struggling with the stigma associated with depression and increasing suicide awareness. Every year, over 200 guests gather at the Circle T Ranch for Hillwood's Memorial Day picnic. Among the attendees are local elected officials from our project communities as well, those first responders, active-duty members and veterans of the United States Armed Forces and their families. Can I have slide 8, please? Last but not least, represented here is seven total miles of waterline extensions with the Bluebird Business Park. This is a $15 million investment footed by Hillwood, not the county. The county water authority does not have these extensions in their long-term plan, and they will only happen with private development. There is no guarantee another developer will offer the four additional miles. Three miles is all that is needed to service the business park. The additional four is to complete the service in this area in response to neighbor feedback we receive through our community engagement process. Several neighbors need this water, others haven't built on their properties due to a lack of safe and reliable water. These extensions provide an opportunity for the rest of the property owners or their heirs to access it in the future, where that opportunity currently does not exist. Thank you again for the chance to speak tonight. That's all I have.
Hal Bone. Nathan Gwynn is after, Mr. Hal.
Good evening. I'm Hal Bone, live at 1341 Spring Creek Road. I am a lifelong resident of Wilson County. As a builder and real estate developer, I've had the privilege of working on numerous projects across our community, and I can confidently say that Hillwood's Bluebird proposal is one of the most well-thought-out and beneficial developments that I have encountered. Hillwood's approach to developing the Bluebird Project demonstrates a high level of professionalism and a commitment to listening to our community. Over the past several months, Hillwood has actively engaged with local residents, community leaders, civic groups, education institutions to create a project that is a win-win for this community. They carefully considered our feedback and incorporated our requests and concerns into their design and development plans to ensure that the project aligns with Wilson County's needs and aspirations. One aspect of this project, if you'll go to slide 9, please. One aspect of this project that deserves special mention is the convenience store and fueling station that I am proposing to build. Access to fuel and food stamps, staples, I'm sorry, is a critical need in that area of county. For far too long. When considering the future of this property, we have a choice to make. Do we want thousands of new homes that provide minimal tax revenue and strain our existing resources? Or do we want a development that will serve as a cornerstone for sustained economic growth, generating opportunities that help build a stronger and more sustainable Wilson County? In my view, as a developer and a lifelong resident of Wilson County, Hillwood's Bluebird Project stands out as the clear and responsible choice. Additionally, Hillwood's plan thoughtfully balances development with preservation. It sets aside over 350 acres for agricultural use, ensuring the character and heritage of our county are respected. Hillwood's inclusion of agricultural research and preservation programs such as partnerships with the University of Tennessee, Cumberland University, the Tennessee FFA Foundation shows their commitment to promoting agriculture and advancing technologies that will help all farmers. The growth we are witnessing in Wilson County is inevitable, but what we choose to do with it will define our future. We have a well-vetted project that represents a responsible, forward-thinking path for our county. I respectfully urge you to support this project. Let's take this opportunity to build a future that works for all of us. Thank you.
Nathan Gwynn. And then Jeremy Neer is next. Jeremy Neer. Nathan Gwynn. Nathan's not here. Go to Jeremy Neer. And Powell Neal will be after Jeremy.
All right. Thank you, Jeremy Neer, 150 Dunaway Road in Lebanon. It's near the other warehouses that are being put in the county, near the 840 and 109 intersection. And ladies and gentlemen of the commission, so thank you for the opportunity to speak. I strongly oppose the proposed industrial park and urge you to reject the rezoning request, which has already been forwarded to you with a negative recommendation from the Wilson County Planning Commission. This development threatens our rural character and agricultural heritage. This proposal spans nearly 1,400 acres of prime farmland. Developers have made promises to protect small portions of the land for agriculture and education, but these measures are insufficient to offset the massive environmental and infrastructural damage this industrial park will cause. Roads in that area are not equipped to handle the influx of industrial traffic, and the added burden on local resources, including water and public services, will cost more than the projected economic benefits. The claim that this project will bring jobs and tax revenues must be weighed against the hidden costs to current residents. Increased traffic, pollution, and wear and tear on the roads will strain county resources. Moreover, this commission works for the people who live here now, not for the developers or for future populations. It is not your goal to grow the population of Wilson County. I'll say that again. It is not your goal to grow the population of Wilson County at the expense of those who are already calling this place our home. The Planning Commission's unanimous decision to reject this rezoning reflects the informed and overwhelming voice of our community. So do you want Wilson County to continue to be known for its strong agricultural heritage, or do you want Wilson County to have the embarrassing title of Warehouse Capital of Tennessee? Ladies and gentlemen, I urge you to listen to your constituents, vote no on the industrial park, preserve the agricultural integrity of our land, and protect the quality of life that makes Wilson County a place we are proud to live in. Thank you.
Powell Neal. And then Jeff Cherry. Powell Neal, and then Jeff Cherry.
Thank you, Mayor Hoto and county commissioners. Thank you for your service. Thank you for being here tonight and listening to all this. I hope nobody's got a headache yet. But anyway, just want to set the record straight about a couple of things. I live at Tucker's Crossroads. I've been there all 66 years of my life, and my kids and my grandkids represent the sixth and seventh generation of our families to be there. We got six grandkids and we almost got seven, and maybe we're going to have more than that. But we're proud of our kids, and we love our kids. We built a ball field there for our kids, and we welcome kids and families to come into our community. It's been talked about the 2,000-something houses. If it was so feasible to put all these houses here, how come they already hasn't been built? The land use plan was put in place in 2006. This is almost the end of 2024. So I think that's kind of being used as a scare tactic somewhat. As most of you, as some of you may know, our family's been involved in agriculture all these generations. We're still farming full-time, and we do have cattle on this property, about 200 head. But that's not the reason that we are opposed to this project. We're opposed to this project because it's going to change our community, our way of life, and the very fabric of who we are. Our community is based on open spaces and the rural way of life. That's what we like, and that's the reason people like it, that's the reason people are coming there. And when they talk about preserving 352 acres of farmland, I just want to set the record straight. Only about a fourth of that is feasible for doing any kind of agriculture. The rest of it's a big hill with trees and rocks and cedar bushes. It might support a few goats, but basically, that's what it is, because we know, because we're there. I know that y'all are getting tired of listening to everybody, but I respectfully request that you turn down this plan tonight and that you leave our community to grow the way that we would like for it to grow, and you listen to the community and the vast majority of what the residents want. I would like for my grandkids to be able to see cows instead of large-scale construction. I would like for them to be able to observe wildlife instead of warehouses. And I would like for them to learn how to drive tractors instead And I would like for them to learn how to drive tractors instead of watch tractor-trailers go down the road. Thank you.
Jeff Cherry. Gina Miles would be next. Jeff Cherry, and then Gina Miles.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. It is past my bedtime, I will have to say. And so I don't know that I've heard anything new here this evening, so I will try and keep my comments brief. As the mayor introduced, my name is Jeff Cherry. I grew up in Mount Juliet. I raised my children in Lebanon, and I now live out in the county. I live at 851 Linwood Road. I did live in Nashville for a very short period of time in the early part of my working career. I appreciate your commitment tonight, your commitment to our community by serving in the roles that you serve. You are to be commended for listening to the voice and being the voice of your constituents. I've been incredibly impressed throughout this process with the character and the community of Tucker's Crossroads, the legacy that they share of family, farming, and friendship, and that I have come to know has been, in my eyes, idyllic. The current land use plan meshes into the fabric of the character of this community. The proposed plan before you does not mesh with the fabric of the character of this community. When this matter came before the Planning Commission, it was denied, and rightfully so, because it does not fit the current land use plan. The amendment request and the rezoning requests were denied, and now we're here, and it's your decision. I'll leave you with this. On November 1 of 1991, I started the Metro Nashville Police Academy. I graduated from there on March 31 of 1992, and as my now-wife was pinning my badge upon my chest, I felt a hand upon my shoulder. I turned and saw my grandfather, and he was smiling. He leaned in, and he whispered in my ear, "Son, you're now vested with great power, and with great power comes great responsibility." He pulled away from my ear, looked me in the eyes, and as we locked, he said, "Always do the right thing." You have great power in your roles as county commissioners. I urge you to use that power tonight to do the right thing. Follow the current land use plan. Follow the recommendation of the Planning Commission, and vote no.
Gina Miles. Sam Parish would be next. Gina Miles, did I say that right? I must have not said the last name right.
Jenna Micus, 3903 Belmont Boulevard. Hello, and thank you all for your time tonight. As I said, I'm Jenna Micus. I'm from Nashville, and I'm here representing Hillwood as the transaction leader. I am responsible for generating business opportunities and leasing, the leasing activities for all of our developments here in Tennessee. It's my job to track available properties, tenant demand, and activity in the market. I do it all day, every day. We are lucky here in Wilson County because unlike many other markets across the country, we have demand for growth. There are currently multiple users that are looking at our area to place their business, and they're looking for spaces between 500,000 and 900,000 square feet. Using the Wilson County Economic Development Team's data, and as Corey mentioned earlier tonight, unincorporated Wilson County couldn't even compete for these as it only has 446,000 square feet currently available. This site would offer Wilson County the opportunity it needs to compete on the highest level for these types of jobs and economic growth. The IT users that we could attract at this site have shown a great amount of interest already. This site offers Wilson County entry into a whole new industry, and with these users come significantly higher-than-average salaries and exceptionally higher economic impact as compared to traditional warehousing. I would respectfully ask for you tonight to look at this as an opportunity to pick a responsible partner for development of this site, one that does what it says it will do, and one engages with the communities that they are in, and I truly believe that's us. Thank you.
Sam Parish.
Mayor, council members, thank you for the time today. My name is Sam Parish with Davy Resource Group. I'm a geologist, environmental consultant, over 20 years of experience, and have had, worked on numerous projects with Hillwood over the years, probably over the last 10 years or so, and I can just say that they do development the right way. You know, they start with the due diligence step, which is what you see if you, you know, the Slide 17 that's in this packet shows the aquatic resources we identified, the cemeteries we identified. That came from some of the desktop analysis and a site visit, and you know, that's kind of the first step in this planning process. And you know, Hillwood goes about this the right way. They first look at a piece of property, and this is kind of the first step to see if it's feasible for development, and that's why we've gotten to this point, is because we determined it is feasible. And so the next step is if this project is approved, we would walk, you know, every square inch of this, identify every stream, delineate every wetland, look for endangered species, endangered species habitat, engage archaeological specialists, and satisfy all the requirements of the state and federal regulations. So then you work with the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And you know, I know people have asked for, you know, environmental studies. That would actually be the step after this when you go through that permitting process. An individual permit through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers requires an environmental assessment, so that would include an evaluation of every wetland and stream, endangered species issues, archaeological issues, cemeteries. All that has to be addressed and thoughtfully planned throughout this process, and it's actually a state and federal regulation that you do that. And working with Hillwood, we would, you know, make sure that all the requirements are met, and that, you know, we would work through that process, avoid and minimize impacts, and that's kind of part of the planning process, is you look at your original site plan and see if there's another, you know, tweak to that site plan that could meet that requirement, and make sure that this development fits into the environment in a way that's responsible and that's actually required by the state and federal regulations. And just wanted to make sure that this council and the mayor y'all knew that Hillwood does this the right way, they, you know, make sure that they listen to me, we do all the wetland stream work, and they make sure to follow our guidance and advice on how to get this permitted and do it the right way. And that's all I've got to say. Thanks.
Joe Haddix, and Tyler Fosness will be after.
Slide 10, please. Good evening. Joe Haddix, CSDG. As you can see on the screen tonight, a lot's been made of the traffic on Bluebird Road. The primary access and the only access to this development will be from Bluebird. There will be no logistics access to the project from Bobo. That will be de-restricted, and there'll be no roadway access at all to Ruton Road or Bell Roads, which will also be de-restricted. Now, in port comparison, there's been some discussion about residential developments tonight. It's been our experience, as you've seen with us in the past, that with a similar residential development, that a connection to Bobo, Bell, Ruton would deprive that secondary access. So TVA easement. You know, this is in addition to the 100-foot perimeter setback that goes in excess of the 50-foot county requirement, let alone the 40-foot landscape buffer, again, in excess of the 10-foot county requirement. Committing to a 35% maximum floor area coverage versus the 50% that is allowed, you know. I did appreciate the comparison by the gentleman earlier about, you know, if you had a million-square-foot building, it would get this to, and all the way down to the square. So what do we not have in that box? We don't have any green space. We have ample green space with, in this opportunity to preserve, you know, and to create our stormwater quality and quantity treatments. We are committing to exceeding the county's 25-year requirement and going to the 100-year storm event, which should help us reduce that downstream effect. Both of these streams, Jennings Fork and Dry Fork, are both FEMA-studied, so we know we adhere to those. We will update those studies accordingly. Again, we have the space. Now, for comparison, I know there's been, again, a residential comparison here. 2,200 homes, just real quickly, is going to generate you somewhere in the neighborhood of 710 students.
Mr. Tyler, you're next.
Thank you.
Could you go to Slide 13, please? My name's Tyler Fosness. I'm with KCI Technologies at 511 Avenue North. I was hired by Hillwood to do traffic impact study for the development. The first thing I want to point out, though, is that they have also committed to do traffic impact studies with each new building that comes in. Before it's designed and approved, they'll do a new traffic impact study so we can verify all this analysis. But just to get into a little bit of what we studied, Hillwood asked us to expand our radius of what we normally study in a traffic impact study to include up north to Trousdale Ferry Pike, over to Bell Road to the east, and down south to Poplar Hill Road. We studied these mostly to gauge what Hillwood would be needed to prepare to invest over the time in the roadway system. As you can see, our major improvement would be the realignment of this Linwood Road as it goes down south to Bluebird Road to make that the direct route with stop-controlled approaches at Bluebird Road and Bobo Road off of that. This ensures the truck traffic from the development gets between the interstate and the site as quickly as possible and doesn't affect that outer area that we studied. Other improvements we looked at for the interchange will definitely be installing either traffic lights or some kind of roundabout, depending on input from the community, input from the county, and the traffic impact studies that we do. Also, road widening, making sure there's enough lanes out there to accommodate all the added traffic. Turn lanes at intersections will also be looked at and recommended at the interchanges. The main point that I would like to end with is just to reiterate it, they will be doing traffic impact studies at each building as we go through the development so that we can verify these improvements are needed, we can identify any new improvements that are needed, and most importantly, we can get the timeline right on when these improvements go in so that we can ensure they're constructed before any problems arise when they're needed. My name's Tyler Fosness, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have them. Thanks.
Lana Soot, and then Peyton Witt.
Hi, my name is Lana Soot, and I'm at 97 Directors Row, Jackson, Tennessee, and I'm with Younger Associates. We are a market research firm that's been serving cities, counties, economic development boards for over 30 years. And our primary job is to look at incentives that are offered by those groups to industry. The Hillwood group came to us because they learned that we did the analysis for Wilson County and for the city of Lebanon, and they wanted to look at the very same methodology for their project, even though they are not seeking any type of incentive. So we use the same methodology to see what type of economic impact it would have on the local economy. Now, we looked at it in several different ways, and I can't explain to you how to do an economic impact in three minutes, but let me hit some highlights. You've already used a lot of the numbers. Could you go to Slide 2, please? You know, we've already talked about the jobs. We didn't really talk much about the wages, but there will be a significant amount of wages that are generated. And then there's one number on the screen that's just so huge, we need to talk about that for just a minute, because it's $19.6 billion. Now, you think I'm just talking about really big numbers here just to wow you, but that is over a 15-year period. And so that is all the dollars that would flow through the economy because of the operations and the downstream spending. So that's way off in the weeds, and we don't really need to know that. So when I was thinking about, as a county commissioner, what would you want to know? I have the, I guess, I don't know if it's fortunate or unfortunate, opportunity to serve my county as a commissioner, and I thought, if I was sitting in your chair, what would I want to know about this project to make the best decision? Because really, I'm neutral ground. You know, I just do math, so this is what the math tells me. If you could go to Slide 3. One thing that's real important to the county is the property taxes that it generates. Right now, that property is only generating about $30,000 in property tax annually. When the park is fully built out and fully operational, it will generate an approximate $3 million. So you can see that's a significant increase in property tax. And what does that mean to you? I know maintenance of effort is a big thing for county commissioners, so $1.4 million to the school fund would be something that I think would be very helpful in your plans for the future. There are also some other things that we looked at. I know there's been a lot of talk tonight about the residential development. The residential development, while it does generate lots of things, it supports fewer jobs, pays fewer wages, it also generates less property tax. But there's another thing about residential property. You know, most homeowners, they don't pay enough in property taxes to cover the services that are provided by the county. So it taxes the, all the residents of the county more.
Peyton Witt would be next. Peyton Witt. Gerald Lawson is after.
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to be a part of this process with you this evening. My name is Peyton at 6410 Poplar Avenue. I work for Hillwood Construction Services, and I personally oversee all construction for our company in this region, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to give you some insight into HCS. HCS performs all construction for Hillwood, so it will be our responsibility to steward the entire construction process of this business park, eliminating a revolving door of general contractors common with residential developments. Additionally, we are certainly the most successful when we get the opportunity to come into a community and partner with local and talented trade contractors to deliver quality facilities. I certainly believe that is a benefit of us being a part of this community, and we look forward to those relationships. We certainly exercise extreme care with everything that we do, from planning our traffic routes, abiding by local ordinances, creating safe environments within and around our job sites, participating in community service, and being available to address concerns of the community during the construction process. Specifically, as it relates to blasting, which we heard concerns about, that starts now. Those companies who specialize in that are licensed by the state of Tennessee to perform that activity. Surveys are done with all adjacent properties to not only document existing conditions, but to take into account their distance to our project sites so our blasting is designed in order to localize that activity within the bounds of our construction site. Those are all standard practices for us. Lastly, you're certainly familiar with my development counterparts, Paul and Scott. You think you guys got a lot of visits. I share an office with them, and I also share the vision of this business park and the responsibility to physically deliver the promises made in this development. We also look forward to lasting relationships with our neighbors built on integrity. We look forward to the opportunity to build in and serve this community. Thank you for your time.
Gerald Lawson. Paul Stumm will be next.
Gerald Lawson. To the opportunity to address you on Hillwood's behalf this evening. What I specifically want to speak to is the issue that was brought up with Rutherford County and the tax issue. Three minutes is not enough time to go into the complexities of that entire project. I want to hit some highlights of that. The, as was said earlier, Hillwood works in every community it comes in to be a good partner with those that it works with in each community. In that community, they worked with the city of Smyrna, Rutherford County, the Industrial Development Board, and the Airport Authority. They were approached and negotiated and worked with a system of a long-term 99-year lease, and then with a pilot program to offset that because the city, because the airport could not physically sell the property, it had to be on a long-term lease. Like I said, a little more complex than just getting into a three-minute discussion. But the important part- But the important part of that is that Hillwood honored all the agreements and further the intent of all the agreements that they had with all those parties, and that those parties were happy with the product that resulted in hundreds of thousands of dollars being generated for the Airport Authority and revenue over a long-term revenue stream, so they didn't have to come back on the county. In fact, I'd like to read a quote from John Black, who's the executive director of the Smyrna-Rutherford County Airport Authority, who in May of this year said that, "Hillwood has been an outstanding partner in the development of the airport business park. From start to finish, they went above and beyond throughout our working relationship and construction. They're truly a team of professionals who work together with the community to produce projects that are beneficial to the local economy." I'd like to reiterate, that's what this company, and that's what this partnership group wants to do. And like I say, a lot's been discussed as to the zoning and the type of use, but I think it was important to be distinct in who you partner with as opposed to how you partner the project. So, thank you very much.
Paul Stumm. Scott Campbell will be our last one.
Mayor Hoto, members of the commission, I'm glad to see you're all still awake. My name is Paul Stumm. I reside at five-one-five West Spring Street in Lebanon, and I am here representing Cumberland University tonight. And I want you to know that Cumberland University is neither supporting or opposed to this project. We are not here to advocate for or against. But I do, on behalf of Cumberland University, want to make you aware of one important aspect of this project, and that has to do with something that was referred to earlier, has to do with a gift committed from the developer to a combination of Cumberland University and the University of Tennessee, of approximately one-quarter of this total development, a little over three-hundred-and-fifty acres, that would be preserved as agricultural property and used by both institutions for both agricultural and scientific research purposes. My board met to consider that opportunity just about two weeks ago, and they voted unanimously to accept this gift if this project comes to fruition. And they further directed me to write a letter to explain our position, which I would like to in my remaining time, which will take less than three minutes, less than a minute and a half perhaps, to share with you the letter that I wrote to the Hillwood Group addressed to Mr. Scott Campbell. Dear Mr. Campbell, please accept my appreciation for offering Cumberland University the opportunity to be gifted a portion of the property within your company's proposed development on attractive land located near the I-40 Linwood Road interchange. Cumberland is certainly excited about the potential of this opportunity, but wants to qualify our willingness and ability to be a part of the project. Cumberland is particularly excited about the potential opportunity to partner with our colleagues at the state's flagship institution, the University of Tennessee, and more specifically, the Institute of Agriculture, UT Extension, and UT Ag Research Offices, as laid out in the letters from the University of Tennessee. Specifically, Cumberland University would seek to ensure that this potential gift is used for studies that would benefit farming and scientific communities, among other educational disciplines. While Cumberland does not, or, does not support or oppose the rezoning Hillwood is seeking for its project, the university's Board of Trust is met to discuss and evaluate this opportunity in light of the school's gift acceptance policy, and has authorized me to inform you that Cumberland would be pleased to accept this gift of land if the proposed Hillwood project is approved by the esteemed members of the Wilson County Commission. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your contemplation of this important issue.
Scott Campbell.
Mayor, commissioners, one word comes to mind to sum up this property and our proposal, and that's opportunity. This land is currently owned by over a hundred-and-fifty investors. They have owned it for nearly twenty years, and they have indicated it is time to sell. This is not a farm. There are no heirs to pass this land down to the next generation. This is not a case of no farms, no food. This is developable property. And Wilson County's vision for this property for nearly twenty years has been to see it develop. That's reflected in the land use plan. The opportunity in front of you today boils down to responsible growth with a responsible development partner. We believe our proposal is the highest and best use of this property, and is an opportunity to fulfill the needs and desires of this community, and that's something we're incredibly proud of. The opportunity to provide safe, healthy drinking water to Wilson County residents, the opportunity to partner with Hal Bone, one of this community's most respected businessmen and leaders, to deliver a fueling station and convenience store that's been asked by the community, and the most exciting opportunity to honor the agricultural heritage of Wilson County and the desire of this community to see land preserved for agricultural use. We look forward to seeing UT Institute of Agriculture, Cumberland University, and the Tennessee FFA Foundation partner to permanently protect three-hundred-and-fifty-two acres of this site for agricultural education and research. This is an opportunity for you, as commissioners, to fulfill the goals of this community. This is an opportunity to solidify this land's future with an organization that will be a true community partner, who will deliver impactful benefits to our neighbors and the larger Wilson County community. The growth of Wilson County is not on the horizon. It's at the doorstep. Growth must be well-thought-out and executed by reputable partners to be successful, and for this piece of developable property, Hillwood is that partner. We are leading this development with a community-first mindset. For over a year, we have engaged with our neighbors to better understand their needs and goals, and our development is a direct reflection of their input. Hillwood is honored to present this proposal that has the power to boost the local economy, to bring transformational tax revenue to the county, and to provide good-paying jobs that will offer residents the ability to raise their families right here in Wilson County. We have received overwhelming outreach and support.
Thank you in your time. Thank you, sir, for your time.
And this is a direct reflection of that input. We appreciate it.
Close public comment period at this point. I need a motion to go back into session. Second, all in favor, say aye. We're back into session, and before we start, remember that what we'll do, we'll do the one for Free Hill Ventures first, okay? So we'll do that one, and then we'll deliberate on that, and then we'll do the second one. Chris, Christopher, excuse me.
L C for McCurry East Ventures LLC and the Kathy Espis property is seeking a land use amendment from medium-density residential to commercial center and a rezoning request from A-one agricultural to C-four plan commercial. This is being requested according to their application to amend the land use plan and match the current rezoning request for this specific property. The property is referenced as Wilson County Tax Map one forty-one, being parcels two-point-oh-three and two-point-oh-six. The property contains approximately nine-point-nine-eight acres. This application for rezoning of the property was presented to the Wilson County Planning Commission on November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. It is being forwarded to the Wilson County Commission with a positive recommendation, and approval of this master plan is also subject to the same infrastructure improvements from the surrounding master plan on McCurry Road.
Senator Mr. Evans is district. Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. This is part of a larger rezoning that we approved earlier this year. It doesn't change anything to do with the rest of the rezon. It kind of clears up the area, if anything, so I have no issues with it, and I'd make a motion that we approve this request.
I got a motion and second discussion now. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? Got one no. Commissioner Kurtz. Let the record reflect that, and then we'll move now with the next one, please.
All right, the next application has been made by Joe Haddick Civil Site Design Group with permission from property owners NWC Investments LLC, is requesting a land use, land use plan amendment from high-density residential to commercial center, and a rezoning request from A-one agricultural to plan C-four commercial properties, and is located on Bluebird Road, Linwood Road, Bobo Road, and Rowan Road, being Wilson County Tax Map eighty-four, parcels fourteen and sixteen, and Map eighty-nine, parcels four. The combined parcels request is approximately one-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-one-point-nine-nine acres. The applicant for rezoning of the property was presented to the Wilson County Planning Commission on June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four, and is being forwarded to, on appeal by the applicant, to the Wilson County Planning Commission with a negative recommendation. If this application is approved, they would be subject to master plan amendments such as a hundred-foot setbacks on peripheral property lines, a sixty-foot building height is requested, thirty-five percent building lot coverage, and a hundred-year storm, storm detention requirements would be required at site plant phase if the development was to approve.
Anyone wishing to speak on this property?
Mike Stone. There we go.
Commissioner Dow.
Yes, this is in fifteen, actually, it's me and Terry Scruggs, this district or whatever, but as you seen tonight, the community did speak, and they, they're saying the same thing that, that I guess I've been telling y'all, you know, for the last six or seven months. You know, one, you know, it didn't come with a positive recommendation. Two, it didn't, it was eight-to-two in the planning commission, and three, it doesn't fit the current land use plan. So, my vote on this is a no.
It's a motion and a second to deny. Please hold your applause or any of that till we get through discussion, please. I'm gonna go, I got Commissioner Dow with the motion to deny, and who was the second? Commissioner Hall. I want to go to Commissioner Scruggs because it's in his district as well. Commissioner Scruggs, comments?
Yes, I, I'm still gonna go with the people with the water and the road deal, and, you know, it's, they're telling them ten years, four waters ever gonna hit there. You know, it's, it just, I don't think it's right, but I'm gonna vote with Hillwood.
Commissioner McFarlane.
Mr. Chairman, and fellow commissioners, last Thursday, I made a trip to Rutherford County, and I went into Mr. Rob Low, Rob Mitchell, I'm sorry, Rob Mitchell, he was here tonight, he's the property assessor, and I did a little research and found some anomalies in the records of Rutherford County concerning the taxes and so forth, and I've put copies that look like this, fellow commissioners, on your desk, you have copies of it. Two things jump out at me, and I just want to share that with everybody. One of them is that, as of now, going forward for the balance of ninety-nine years and eleven months, whatever's left on that, Hillwood will pay zero taxes to, to Rutherford County. I don't know what they pay to the Airport Authority, but the Airport Authority doesn't build schools, and I don't know how Jeff's gonna build schools without any property taxes coming off of that property out there. And the, the other thing is that Mr. Mitchell, who is the property assessor, they went out to one of the buildings to do an analysis on it, and we've seen great big numbers up here of six thousand employees and whatever. One of those buildings was supposed to have several hundred employees in it, and he told me he counted thirteen. Now, that's not economic benefit to this county. It's just not, and I think it's a mission of this commission to, number one, take care of this county, two, the communities and counties, and three, the citizens within the communities, and this isn't the way to go. You have copies of these documents on your desk. I have a green binder up here with the master copies in it. Anybody is welcome to come and see it, and for that purpose and that personal loan, I'm gonna vote no, and invite my fellow commissioners to vote no. Thank you.
Mr. Rich.
Sorry, I need to go. I realized that I had touched a request to speak, but I will go ahead and tell you what my feelings are on this. I've listened to the people behind us, and they obviously do not want this in their community, and I've got a feeling that if we go forward with this, we're basically putting a for-sale sign on Wilson County, so I'm voting no.
Commissioner Fields, please hold your applause, if you would, till we get through, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I look at this, we're in twenty-twenty-four, the twenty-first century. We're not in eighteen-twenty-four and the nineteenth century. We've got people without public water access. We've got other major problems within the county. I don't have a dog in the fight. I'm as far west in the county as you can get, but also take a part that I am voting for the people of Wilson County, not just District One, and I want on record that I am going to support and vote yes.
Commissioner Gentry.
Yeah, I want to address the airport issue. I'm on the airport commission of Lebanon, and we don't sell land on the airport, so therefore, the people that build hangars there, they lease the land, and they pay money to the city for the land that the, that the building they build is on. So, the fact they don't pay property tax for the land is normal, okay? It's normal they don't pay property tax on the land when they build a property if they don't own the land, but they do pay a leasing fee every year for the land that the building's on. We do the same thing at the airport in Lebanon. And I think this project is a win-win for the county. I think it has a lot of positive to it, not just the water, but the economic impact, and I think we are very short-sighted, just like the gentleman said earlier, when people didn't want the fairgrounds or the agricultural center many years ago, and the county commission voted for it anyhow. I think we'd be really unwise to vote against this. Thank you.
Commissioner Glover.
We got a planning commission for a reason. They, they kind of keep up to date on our rules, our land use that we have, and they sent a negative recommendation to the county commission for us to make a decision. No matter how good it sounds, if it doesn't find, if it doesn't fall within our land use, and it comes with a negative recommendation, we, we have to, we have to listen to our planning commission. That's all I have to say.
Commissioner Denton, do you have yours pushed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Commissioner Denton.
I, I wasn't gonna say anything for a moment, listen, because I hear the people. I happen to be one of those people that the city of Lebanon destroyed their property with no thought whatsoever given to me as a homeowner. Take, took a third of my yard, destroyed the value of my property, changed all the rules they had to to get there and to do what they needed to do so the landowner could get what he wanted done on the property. So I see how it works, and I know how it works. And there's one thing for progress, and I'm for it, and I'm for it, but I'm not for it when it comes to ruining the quality of life of the permanent residents, of the people here that's lived here and raised families here and have homes here. When you, when you ruin their quality of life, then progress needs to stop right there and look at a better way to do it. And so, in this particular case, it seems to me like that this is gonna create much inconvenience for this neighborhood. First of all, that, just to get off at that ramp, that's an infrastructure nightmare. That's a death trap on that interstate. The exit ramps, the entrance, the entrance and exit ramps are too small, they're not big enough. The bridge is not big enough. There's not one road you can turn down that has enough space that you can get to, have two cars pass on, not one. And one direction, nowhere for them to turn around at all, and so, you're not gonna force anybody to do anything when they're driving a trailer truck to do what they want to do with it, and the, if, if so you do, that means you're gonna have to put the traffic at an inconvenience of the people who live there and work there every day. So I see some real problems with that. Third thing I see a problem with is all these incentives we're giving to, I mean, why do we have to have incentives for something to have? It's good, it's good for us. I mean, we're, we're giving land, so everybody's happy. It's land that can't be used, it's not good usable land. So we giving away, bringing a local contractor to put in a convenience store to make it convenient, and we've got, all these incentives are given to everybody. Seems like some real problems. And we're putting water in for the people, which the counties should have done years ago. So, I, I think we've got some real problems here when we have this many incentives, because it leads us down a road to where that's just a little bit too much persuasion.
Commissioner Breeze? Nope. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak before we go that has not already spoke? Commissioner Bowman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I don't know why I had requested this earlier, and it took me out of the queue, so.
Sorry.
I'm not sure. No problem. You knew I would be long-winded, didn't you?
No, I did. No, I did not. Never argue with a lady.
I have never been more proud to be a Wilson Countyan than tonight. This courthouse is overflowing with people who love this county, who love the land, who love the people, who have a vision and a passion for what they want this county to be. The halls are filled, this room is filled. I have just never been more proud than to be a part of this county. Tonight, there's two things we must consider. We must, as a body, as county commissioners, consider the recommendation of our planning commission. Our planning commission sent us a very strong and very clear decision with an 8-2 denial on the land use amendment and a 10-0 denial on the rezoning for this proposal. Our planning commission is mandated by the state to complete hours of training each year that includes the rights of private property owners and how those rights relate to the public planning process. Our planning commission has years of expertise in law, engineering, public safety, public service, business, construction, and agriculture. Our planning commission listened to hours of sworn testimony. While I would hope everything we heard tonight in public comment was truthful, there was no raising of the right hand, no promising to tell the truth, the whole truth, so help me God, tonight was about our community letting us know how they feel. And this, this community definitely let us know how they feel about this project. When I take into account all of these things, the planning commission's denial of both the land use and the rezoning request, I must vote no on this project. The second thing this body must consider is the current land use. This exact area was specifically studied in our current 2006 land use master plan as gateway number one. In our current land use master plan for Tucker's Crossroads, the opening sentence of the analysis reads, "The Tucker's Crossroads area is a quaint community whose character should be preserved through appropriate planning in the adjacent areas." And the closing sentence in the analysis reads, "Much of the existing public infrastructure, roadway, for Tucker's Crossroads is undersized and incapable of handling growth." In the public input section for Tucker's Crossroads, it says, "Community residents would like to see improved water and sewer capabilities." Guys, we're almost 20 years into this plan, and it still describes Tucker's Crossroads. Tucker's Crossroads is still quaint, the existing infrastructure hasn't changed, is still undersized and incapable of handling growth, and the residents would still like to see improved water and sewer capabilities. While our land use plan has aged, and I have been a vocal advocate for updating it, the Tucker's Crossroads portion of the land use plan still holds true. For the last 20 years, we've known, we've known about and could have improved water capabilities. We don't need an industrial solution for our water, we need a community solution to those who need access to clean, healthy water. This land is currently zoned A1, and the future land use direction is not industrial. Based on this, again, I must vote no on this. Finally, there's a consideration for what is the best use of this land. And my plea with us tonight would be that we would not circumvent the already started and appropriate pathway for determining the best use of this land. We will have the first draft of the future land use plan for our steering committee to review next month, January, and then to present to residents of Wilson County for input and feedback and revisions, and eventually for adoption by spring. That is our benchmark. The best use of this land is a few short months away with wisely, by wisely stewarding, the taxpayer dollars already allocated for the new land use plan with a GNRC through data and public input. If industrial use of this land is the best use, it will be evident by springtime. I appreciate your time, and I will conclude with this. This is the largest proposed rezoning of land in Wilson County. Our job tonight is not to consider the lesser of two evils, houses or warehouses. Our job here tonight is to vote on the request in front of us. That request is to rezone 1,400 acres of land currently zoned A1 agriculture to C4 industrial use. The land in Tucker's Crossroads is not meant to be covered in concrete and industrial warehouses. Our planning commission voted to deny that request, our current land use map denies that, and tonight I will be voting to deny that. I hope you will join me. Thank you.
Seeing no one else in the hopper to discuss this, I'm assuming you're ready to vote. The vote on the floor right now is a motion to deny the request to change this from high residential to commercial center, and also at the same time, voting to change it from an A1 to C4. On the floor right now is a motion to deny and a second.
Both of them at the same time?
They both go at the same time, yes. I got a motion and a second. Are you ready to vote?
If you vote yes, you're voting to deny.
So if you're voting yes, you're voting to deny. If you're voting no, you're not voting to deny. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We'll have a boys' vote then, I can't tell for sure. Can you give me a boys' vote on a roll call? Vote yes if you want to deny, vote no if you don't want to. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
17 yes, 8 no.
So the motion is denied, 17. Thank you. We have a report for the minutes committee, Commissioner Fields. Commissioner Glover.
Motion to go in recess for 10 minutes.
Got a motion to go in recess for 10 minutes, I hear a second. All in favor, say aye. We are in recess.
I tried to get us out of there.
How are you? You know Hillwood when you hear "water."
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 Time for us to go back into session.
Need a motion to go back into session. If my people in the back would please ease out, where we could go back into session, that would be good.
Motion to go back in session.
You can, need a motion to go back into session.
Motion.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, here we go. Report for the minutes committee, Commissioner Fields.
December 4th, upstairs conference room, the copy of minutes are in your packet, I move that they be received and filed.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Reading of the minutes.
Motion to second, the reading of the second.
Yes, sir.
Here we go, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I did, we did have William Bradford come in tonight to speak to you about United Communications, but I told him if he could come next week, that, next month, that would have been better, and he agreed 100%. So we go the report for the emergency committee management committee, Commissioner Bernard.
DMAT, December 3rd, upstairs in the conference room, I move the minutes to be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Emergency management report director Cooper is out of pocket tonight, he said, sends his regard, so there is, I don't know if there's anything in your packet, but I'll take a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Report from law enforcement committee, Commissioner Kurtz.
I have no reports, any questions?
No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Report from the public buildings committee, Commissioner Weathers. If you'd pull that mic down, and I know you're loud, but...
Public buildings committee, December 3rd, 2024, in the committee room of the courthouse. We started at 5:21, and the minutes are showing that we got over at 5:23. It went a little longer, so I'd like to adjust the timing to 5:33. Your minutes are in your packet, move they be received and filed with this notice.
Motion is second, has a minute, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, thank you.
Ag center management, Commissioner Scruggs.
No reports.
Animal control, Commissioner Breeze.
Public buildings committee, December 3rd, 2024, in the committee room of the courthouse. We started at 5:21, and the minutes are showing that we got over at 5:23. It went a little longer, so I'd like to adjust the timing to 5:33. Your minutes are in your packet, move that they be received and filed with this notice.
Motion is second, as amended, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, thank you.
Ag center management, Commissioner Scruggs.
No report.
Animal control, Commissioner Breeze.
Animal control met November 19th and December 5th, both sets of.
Your minutes are in your packet, I move that they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Audit, Commissioner Glover.
No report.
Broadband access, Commissioner Franklin.
No report.
Developing tourism, Commissioner Brown.
No report.
Ethics, Commissioner Dow. Finance, Commissioner Costley.
No report.
Health and recreation, Commissioner Smith.
No report.
Insurance, Commissioner McFarland.
No report.
Judicial, Commissioner Gentry.
We met tonight at the minutes within our next month's package.
Legislative ad hoc, Commissioner Costley.
No report.
Plan in zoning, Commissioner McFarland. Rules, Commissioner Keith.
No report.
Urban type facility board, Commissioner Scruggs.
Urban type facility board, December 5th, minutes are in your packet.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aaron Maynard is a little under the weather tonight, so we will skip the financial report. Remove the report from the budget committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Budget committee met December 3rd, minutes in your packet, move that they be received.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mayor, you think you could get a vote on his financial report that's in the pack?
Financial report, I hear a motion to approve it.
Approve.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. All right, Mr. Marlowe, ready to roll.
Resolution 24-12-2, to make an appropriation from capital projects to county buildings.
Approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25 and 0.
I do appreciate all of you being here tonight, by the way.
Resolution 24-12-3, to make an appropriation from capital projects fund to WEMA.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25 and 0.
25 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-12-4, approving Wilson County Board of Education budget amendment 25-05.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25 and 0.
25 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 25-12-5, approving Wilson County Board of Education budget amendment 25-06.
Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25 and 0.
25 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-12-6, reflecting revenues received but not included in the original budget to make an appropriation to finance.
Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25 and 0.
Resolution.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Resolution 24-12-7, to make an appropriation from animal control, restricted funds to animal control.
Motion.
Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Dow, Commissioner Weathers, Commissioner Keith. Commissioner Keith, all hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25 and 0.
25 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 24-12-8, amending the Wilson County zoning resolution regulating bed and breakfast short-term rentals.
Got a motion and a second, Commissioner Pat? That's what it's showing up there. It shows Stafford, it shows Stafford earlier.
Yeah, for some reason.
Yes, gone back in time.
Gone back to the O commissioners.
Do you really have a question?
I'm sorry, guys.
It's okay.
On this, on this resolution, it's talking about changing the minimum land required for a, basically an Airbnb in the agricultural areas of the county, agricultural zone areas. It says make it a minimum of two acres, but the current lot size requirement for A1 agricultural is 80,000 square feet. Would it not make more sense to match that instead of making up a new number to do that?
Thought that is the new.
What's, what's, what's the other one?
Yeah, Chris.
Yeah.
Christopher.
Yeah.
Big night for you.
All of our lot size requirements are square feet, not acres.
That's correct. The current standard is two acres in the R1 zone district, and our minimum lot standard is 40,000 square feet. And when that was put into place, the minimum standard for R1 was 25,000 square feet. So the acreage requirement was what the board at the time felt was comfortable, it didn't have anything to do with the minimum lot requirement. That's what they felt was the minimum they needed for an Airbnb.
So we're not, so it's not trying to match the lot size requirement?
No, sir, they're, they're trying to make a uniform across the county for the Airbnb. Correct.
He's done, he's done, and I'm thankful. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're good. Lauren just said if you're done, she was done, and I said I'm thankful. Okay, we voted for that. Any old business to come before the body?
No.
Any new business? One more motion. Thank you, we are good. Merry Christmas to everybody.
Merry Christmas.